I'll call to her and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got everybody here tonight, so we've got a quorum. I have not been told if there's any changes to the agenda, so correct me if I'm wrong, anyone?
Motion to approve.
Chelsea made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Sarah does a second, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, agenda's approved. Consent agenda. Jim, one of you days, you're gonna fill out a whole page for us, aren't you? Did you have any other additions on here, or we could go all in, okay? Anybody have any questions on any of those that are listed under the consent agenda? Okay, so no for motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Yeah, I can second.
Nobody does a second, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, alright, we'll move on to the minutes. Anybody see anything that was out of place?
No, I reviewed these.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I will have one. We had, we created a water sewer storm improvement district and called it twenty twenty-one dash seven at the last meeting, but we already have that number, so that project will actually be twenty twenty-two dash one. So it's just a minor correction, but needed to happen.
Okay. We'll note that correction. Anything else? Otherwise, I'll look for motion to accept with the one correction.
I'll make the motion to accept, I had reviewed these, and I did not notice the numerical discrepancy. Good aye, thank you, Lucas.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Alright, public comment, anything, anybody got anything they wanna talk about tonight? You wanted to be your time, yep?
I'm Roger Miller.
Go grab the mic, there we go.
I've never done this before, but.
It's alright.
I'm Roger Miller from, I got MPM, and I got that shop, that brown shop, it's about a half a mile south of one hundred and twelfth Avenue, east side of the road. My problem is with dirt, uh, Mike Stock with Dirt Dynamics. We had the road in there, I know when I bought the place, I had to give like a thirty-five foot easement for a future road someday to go through there. Well, Mike Stock came in there, and I had a foot of matting and a foot of crushed concrete and everything down, you know? But he came in and he just trashed everything. Well, then he moved over the thirty-five feet, he's on mine. I can't even drive in there when it rains, I can't get through my fence. Watered by the dirt piles there, some of it was a foot deep, I can't even get dirt out of there, to haul dirt out of there. And he's driving on mine, and I put up some posts so he would stay off, because he's driving on the grass and ruining all the grass, you know, on the east side. But he's driving a septic truck through there dumping septic. I had a little wash pit there, he dumped a septic truck in that, well, I was really mad.
Does he got a hole dug there for it, or he just dumped it?
No, I had a little tiny hole there, I just, I got a back trunk where I suck up mud and water, I just put that there. And they just came and dumped it in there. Well, I made him.
Is that your land, or?
Yeah, it's all my land there, yeah. He's got his dirt pile on the, on the east side and then the south side. That was fit to be tied, I made him pump it out while he only got part of it, and it all seeped up, well, that got left. Well, then I put posts up so he wouldn't drive through. Well, then I see, last week, I see they backed up the septic truck, and you got toilet paper, you know, well, the septic waste, just, he dumped it, I don't own the land there. But he backed them, I mean, he just dumped it there, you know, twenty foot from my trucks, it just reeks in the summertime, and I don't want it. I can't use the road. I can't use my lot, any of that crushed concrete is just getting all trashed with, you know, then he made the road more than thirty-five feet, you know, that I had to give for a right of way for a future lateral on a road. I mean, he's willing to have double trucks. I got into a fight out there before, I made the dozer operator move all the dirt and stuff off, while they just, as soon as I leave, they'd fill it all back in again. And I don't know what to do, because my Mac won't talk to me, it won't. I'm about as easygoing as they get, but it's been since this spring, and he promised how he would, uh, it's gonna be better than it was, I said, well, I don't care, I've never, it's, it was plenty good for me, but, you know, driving their tent triple, triple axle dump trucks out of there daily, one right after another, you know, it's, they just trashed it right away, and it's.
So let me ask this, then, is it private road that they're driving on, or is it?
Well, it's basically, yeah, it's, it's, it's all mine, it's an approach coming in, and then when I bought it, I had to give thirty-five foot easement for a future road someday.
Yep, okay.
Uh, but I've maintained it right up to the property line, I added all the blanket and the crushed concrete. He said he was gonna pour concrete and put drain, you know, but he never did none of that. He don't even put gravel down, he don't do anything. He just smears mud or clay on it, then he packs it with a dozer and.
Does he own the land on the other side of you, though?
He owns the land on the east side of me, and I think he's got the land on the south side. But then I kinda, it's kinda went around, I've talked to some people here. But then I've talked to Fargo, and I just kinda going in a big circle, and it's, it's, they, they say it's not, everybody says it's not their jurisdiction, and I don't know whose it is, it's, I don't know, whoever gave the permits to him to dump there, I don't know. I'd just like to find somebody to talk to to just get, all I wanted is correct it like it was.
No, I get you. Lucas, is that, that's Fargo's ET, isn't it, or is it ours? I don't remember how far Fargo's ET slides.
It's within the cities.
I believe it's, uh, city's ET, or RET.
So I talked to the city, and they told me it was you guys, I talked to them today again.
Yeah. I believe it's RET, however, like dumping septic or something like that, I believe would be a Cass County Public Health. And we could engage, you know, talk to you, touch base, and then try to pull them into a conversation.
Can you just dump that?
No.
I don't believe you can.
No. Very strange.
Okay, tell you what, let's, we're gonna look into this a little bit more, just 'cause, first, I'm aware of it, but let's look into that. If nothing else, like I said, we can get Cass Public Health come in, and we'll check that. The other thing, have you talked, have you talked to the deputies about any of this?
No, I just, I don't wanna raise a stink, but I'm just, I'm, I'm getting fed up, I'm, I'm at the end of my deal, if I had a club, I'd whop him across the side of the head, when that's my opinion now, you know?
Well, let's not go there yet.
You've spoken to him, it sounds like.
Uh, yeah, but he, he won't talk to me, you know, it's, it's, what's your problem? You know, that's basically what it is, and I tell him, then he'll send one of his cronies out to deal with it, I said, let me talk to him, but he won't talk to me on the phone anyway. The only time is I raise a stink about septic, and I think somebody talked to him on it. But it took a long time before, uh, 'cause he, he rented a piece of land to, I think the Corps or somebody put up a trailer out there, and they needed power. And I said, no, we ain't getting power in mine, because they wanted to feed out of my box there. You'd, you know, have Stock come over and talk to me. Well, he promised how they'd gravel it, I, okay, go ahead, nothing ever happened, you know, but they're out of there.
Let's look into this a little bit.
Did you give anybody access to your phone number?
Pardon me?
Do we have your phone number?
I don't know, I can leave you a card and all that stuff.
Yeah, I'll just do that. The other thing is, take some pictures.
Well, I, I took some pictures, well, on, on that, on the rainy, but I got it when it was really muddy, I can never catch him dumping out there.
That's fine, I just wanna see what it looks like, you know, like after a mud event or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, anytime it rains, or anytime that, if a person goes out there, you just look, you can, I mean, it's obvious what, you know?
And you're smelling.
In the summertime, it does stink.
Alright, well, let's, let's, let us start digging into that, leave your number with Brenton here.
Okay.
And let's, we'll look into this a little bit more, 'cause that's not right, he should know better than that.
And that's all I wanted, is, you know, back level again, so.
Yeah, no, we'll.
And that's where the road is, outside of our state limits, like says ET. If any jurisdiction had anything, anybody could do anything with the actual road, I believe it would be the township.
It's public access, I think, you know, out there, but.
It is a dedicated road right away.
There is no road, though, there is no road, it's approached going into my parking lot.
Yeah, so.
See, that's the thing.
What I think we could do is we follow up with you, and then have a conversation with the township, too, and find out.
And how about the health department?
Yeah, that's the, we're separating the issue. So there's the driveway, the road conditions, one, and then now there's the health department.
It sounds like we have a conflict of interest, too, with neighboring land ownership out there. We need to delineate whose land is whose, and where they can travel and where they can't travel. That needs to be clarified with them.
Then he, then on the septic easement, well, there's other people dumping out there, I don't believe that, I never had anybody falling, jumping, septic, and he does it all the time, you know, it's him, his drivers, whoever, yeah.
Like I said, we'll, we'll, we'll touch base with you and see what we can, how we can help you, but, like I said, I have to just make sure it's with them.
Leave your card with Brenton.
Our ability to work in.
Yeah, we'll follow up on that, so.
I'll do that, then, thank you very much.
Thanks, yep. Alright, any other, anybody else got anything they wanna chit chat about? Going once, going twice? Alright, we'll move on to seven, I think that'll be next, our next meeting. Okay, let's move on to eight, though. Brent, you got that one, it's time for the update, huh?
Yeah, I will pull up the contract here. Overall, what it is, is the contract with Cass County.
Bye, Roger.
Oh, just, I'm trying to find the contract, I'm shifting, but. The contract with Cass County for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, or calendar year twenty twenty-two law enforcement services. This would be for providing two deputies, and it would be for approx, or it'd be approximately a hundred eighty thousand dollars, so we do have to bring that to council for approval. I apologize, I'm trying to find the contract on teams here.
I was gonna say, what was it last year?
Last year, it was around a hundred seventy-five, a hundred seventy-six thousand, so it goes up slightly every year.
Yep. This includes cost of living adjustments and/or?
It is their proposed amount to us, and so what we do is we cover basically half, roughly half the cost of a deputy. So the county will provide, we pretty much cover, they cover the vehicle, equipment, training, different things like that. So it comes out to about fifty-fifty cost share, pretty much fifty-fifty cost share with them. So it would be appro, just over a hundred eighty thousand dollars, a hundred eighty thousand dollars for two deputies.
That's our half?
Yes. Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Law enforcement is very expensive.
Yep.
We did try to get a third deputy, we also tried working with the county through, uh, and the diversion authority, trying to take more of a proactive approach, one, we thought we could use that third deputy, but two, also by having a third deputy before the diversion construction starts and those crews start getting here. The county, the county commission, in their priority, my understanding, was to staff the jail. It was the highest priority, and they weren't comfortable adding a third position at this time for ours, for a third deputy. So we've still engaged in conversations with them, we've had some conversations with them, expressing the needs, concerns. But like I said, at this time, they're not willing to add a third deputy yet.
So what, what are our options if and when this diversion construction starts, and we have, you know, anywhere from thousand to fifteen, hundred additional workers in this town?
We're having ongoing discussions on that with them. I think we're gonna get, we are gonna get a little bit extra coverage from them coming through town, and when others are out in the county area and coming through, but it will be at random, there won't be a pattern to that.
You know, in the conversation, that, when we were on that call with them, it sounded like they wanted, the county commissioners wanted to be reactive instead of proactive, which I would rather it be proactive, if they could really just kinda help out, I wanna continue those talks with them, because I am a little concerned.
I'm very concerned.
Right, but also, we have to also realize here, too, that the county right now is down about eighteen deputies, so coverage is gonna be, just trying to get somebody else down here is gonna be a concern.
Well, I'm talking about the cost of another, I'm hoping that they can help out.
We have been trying, and we will continue to try to get additional coverage from the county, and hopefully we can bring back an amended contract sometime twenty twenty-two, but I cannot promise that.
Has the diversion authority been brought into this?
Yes, they were brought into the conversation, because we were also at, bringing up that conversation of, would the county be covering that deputy, would city, the horse cover that deputy, diversion authority, who would do that? So we've, and also for diversion to talk about, obviously, the impacts that will have workforce-wise.
Yes.
Unfortunately, like I said, the county did not add another deputy at this time for us, but we're continuing to stress the need of it. We were just, it was more reactionary, but we're still trying to chip out on us, but this contract is to cover for at least our two deputies that we do have.
In the, in the Sheriff's Department's defense, they are having trouble bringing on extra staff.
We get that.
The climate is awful right now, so.
We might need to take this into consideration with some of the growth that's going on in Horace, and I will state that very clearly, because this town has a history of being a nice, safe, friendly community, and I hesitate when we aren't getting the support that we need to get too crazy with adding a bunch of extra stuff, but we can't get the help that we need to properly, you know, how do I say it, grow exponentially with the growth that we're experiencing, with not only the diversion, but also several other things going on in our town. I have some very significant concerns, and I don't wanna be up here facing a, an incident or a situation that could have been prevented, you know, I'm very concerned about that, so.
And I'm also concerned, I mean, I'm hoping that we're not talking about man camps in our area and that kinda stuff, 'cause.
Nope, I need the county to take care of that.
Okay, so, um, there's nothing crazy in this agreement, this just extends what we've seen in the past, I have no issues with this, I just see some things coming.
Did the diversion authority have anything to say about their responsibility, you know, to the situation?
No.
Other than they're aware.
They're a separate entity from the county, so.
No, they were in the conversation.
They were, they were engaged in the conversation, however, the, in a situation like this, my understanding was that they rely on the county to cover that additional coverage if they're willing to do so. So, we all, we also had conversations with the county in diversion at the time of, okay, Sarah, exactly what you're starting to get to about future of law enforcement in Horace, at what point do we contract, do we do hybrid, do we have our own? It was just conversation and recognizing that we need to come up with a plan with the county, so nobody is left hanging, or feeling like they're not having adequate coverage either way. So we were talking in those conversations of, what is in the best interest for both the county and the city in the future? But nothing has materialized yet on that, those are just very, very, really conversations of, hey, how can we work together? One thing that we're, we're stressing on, like I said, is additional deputy, and Naomi was part of that conversation we had a while back with them, and Cory was, too. And we'll continue to keep chipping at them and have, continue to have dialogue there, so. Those are conversations, law enforcement is probably gonna be an interesting topic for the council here in the next couple years, within the next few years. I'm sure we're gonna be talking about it a bit.
So the, there was like a thousand or two thousand workers that were gonna be out there?
Over a span of time, I think what they're thinking of, the next summer, we're gonna have somewhere around six hundred. Jim, is that what you've been hearing in your circles?
Anywhere from there to like twelve hundred or so.
Yeah.
Kinda, so six hundred, twelve hundred coming in kind of at once in the spring, roughly?
Sounds like it'd be over, over the summer, in waves, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I know it takes us a little while to, you know, get things done, we don't have a lot of staff, you know, that, we don't have the appropriate staff, so, you know, if the county's not gonna help us, we should probably have some sort of action plan to figure it out for ourselves, so we don't get, you know, a snowball effect that we're trying to clean up some mess, and, you know, it's too late, or.
Yeah, we have something to talk about, we're just, like I said, the conversation right now is, we'll probably be having another conversation with the county and the diversion authority, and reiterating what we did, and maybe go over some more topics with that, see what happens, and see if we're gonna get a definitive no, or maybe, or whatever. If we get a definitive no, then I agree, we'll probably have to come discuss alternatives.
When can we set up another Zoom?
I'm making a note right now.
Okay.
So, uh, one thing I do wanna stress is, you could tell with this contract, you know, a hundred eighty thousand for two deputies, and the county is covering some of the cost share, law enforcement, like I said, is very expensive. So, just something to keep in mind in the future, and like I said, that's why we wanna be able to have dialogue, those conversations, but also look at, you know, if the county would add another deputy in the future, they may come back with change in the funding split that they do with us, too. And that could have a ripple effect with other communities, too, when they're already kicking around, should they do that. They wanted to honor the same cost share that we have, if they're, what they've indicated to us is if they were to do a change in cost share, they wanted to give us ample time in order to be able to budget for and respond with that, so. I just wanna make sure you're aware, because that's probably a conversation that'll also come, come up in most conversations, is cost share.
Are we budgeted appropriately now, Brenton?
Yes, we've always, the contracts, ahead of time, we had a general idea where the contract would fall. This contract is budgeted for within our budget for next year, so.
I knew we had talked about it, I wasn't sure if it was the final deal.
And I apologize, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it was, it was a hundred eighty thousand and some change.
But anyway, for this conversation right now, guys, what we're doing is to approve the contract with the two deputies that we currently have, so.
I, I have no issue with the contract, I've heard through it.
Someone will be looking for a motion to accept the contract, though.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion. There's a second, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's everybody, and motion carries. Alright, Lucas, you got an aye.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Brent, are you able to pull up that map, like the?
Yeah, I can pull, I can pull up on this TV here, the one that was emailed.
Yeah. Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, the, the issue we have is, there's some discrepancy over who owns title to property associated with Sixty-Ninth Avenue South. Mr. Harvey Brecken, through his representative, contacted the city to try to figure out who actually owns this parcel of land. What if I can, yes, the map book would make more sense than I'm saying. Basically, Harvey was trying to sell some property, and there's a discrepancy in the area that I have shaded in red there, if you can all see that.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe not. As to who actually owns that, it looks like it's part of Sixty-Ninth Avenue South, but it doesn't show up as anyone actually owning it, so, Mr. Brecken just asked the city if they could look at the title opinion that was prepared for this property, and see what the city thought, or the city had any records of that property being dedicated to the city for Sixty-Ninth. And so our office looked at the title opinion, and looked at other records, and we can find no indication of whether or not that small chunk was, was dedicated, or who actually owns it, so you can pro, can you see where it says area at issue?
Yeah.
It's, it's that whole chunk, and so the area of concern is that that's shaded in red. And the reason that it's of concern is because the city might need that for Sixty-Ninth Avenue South for any maintenance or improvements that you guys are doing, and I don't want the city to have any trespass claims on that. So the proposal that was sent to Mr. Brecken was if he pays for the survey of that, that whole parcel upfront, and it, it turns out that the, that he doesn't own, or that he does own that parcel in red, if he agrees to dedicate that to the city either by permanent easement or by deed, that the city will then pay for half of the survey. The survey is estimated to cost nineteen hundred dollars, so the city's share would be eight fifty, nine, nine fifty?
Nine fifty.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
When, when the land was planted, the land north of it?
For falls.
For falls?
Yep, a small chunk was done, not the full thing.
Okay.
So there's a, there's an even smaller rectangle.
Right here.
Yeah, that was done.
That was a common quarter of the fall plant?
Yes.
But the rest of it was not.
Yeah, 'cause that's as far as the fall plant extended, and yet we have them.
That's why it's a honey shape.
Their dad has a private access easement on a portion of that red.
Yes, he does.
Chunk.
Yes, he does.
And so that's our, just trying to clean this up of, who actually does own this, is it the city, is it Harvey? And then, like I said, if, if it is, if the survey shows that Harvey's property does not include that red area, then it's the city's, and the city won't have to pay for half of the survey. So we, or I emailed Harvey's representative and proposed this idea out there, and he was all for it.
Just to get it cleaned up.
Yeah.
Contingent upon council approval.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So basically, if the city needs to get that red chunk, the city agrees to pay for half of the survey.
I see no problem with that whatsoever, let's get this done.
I've seen some, I've seen the looks on that, so maybe I'm not explaining it.
No, I just wanna be clear, I also see a note that says area at issue, which is a very large chunk, what does that have to do with the red?
That's what's all getting surveyed.
Yeah, that's what they're surveying.
That, that whole chunk, and then the, the portion in red.
So that, the portion in red, obviously, is something that would require an easement for future roadwork, but that whole big area, do we know who owns that whole big area?
Harvey, it's likely gonna be Harvey's parcel, it's just where is it, where is the actual boundary is, is the question.
And we need a survey to confirm that, because there's nothing on record?
Correct.
How can that be?
The part of record, I think there is a discrepancy in that, and that's why they're trying to figure out, how far does it actually extend? Because GIS shows it as the city, but if you do the survey, then it evidently is not the city, it does not extend as far. So we're trying to figure out, how far does it actually extend, how far does this property, the area at issue, extend into Sixty-Ninth Avenue South? Into the city's right of way?
So it's either Harvey's or the city's?
Correct.
That predates.
This is very, very old.
Oh, yeah.
It's very, it's very old.
Mm-hmm, I was gonna say, I'm sure this is done a long time.
We, we don't even know if it was, just not even planted, or not, we, that's what we're trying to find, and that's what Lucas is referring to, is having that survey to find out who owns what. And then if the city does not own it.
So the action would be to direct the survey, is that what you're saying?
To authorize us to execute the proposal. Which is to, Harvey's gonna have the survey done?
Yeah.
And then if the city needs that, that red area, then the city will agree.
Like an all-in-one?
Yeah, then the city will agree to pay for half of the survey.
And why would the city need that red area?
To avoid a trespass.
Yeah, just because I don't know.
If any situation, you'd have, like, public works staff turn around there, or anything like that, something like that. No, our public works staff typically doesn't go too far down that section of road.
Yeah.
But, in, being as public roadwayway, going right up to it, if a car was turning around, technically, they could be trespassing without it. So that easement, if there was.
So there is no easement on record currently, nothing?
No, that's why we're trying to protect the city, even though we don't anticipate any issues on that, we wanna make sure that we don't run across an issue there.
If the survey says it's ours already?
Then we're fine.
Then the city will not pay for half of the survey.
Okay.
And then if, if he doesn't agree to transfer, if the city does need it, and he doesn't agree to transfer it, then the city will not pay for half of it, either.
Okay.
Well, then we're right back where we started, right? Haven't really gained anything, or lost anything?
He's, he's gonna want the city to pay for half of the survey.
If the survey comes back more than the proposed, let's say nineteen hundred dollars?
Well, yeah, it, it might, that was an estimate that they gave, yeah, estimate that they gave the city.
Do we put a maximum, like a cap on it, how much we're willing to? I'm just asking.
Not a bad idea.
You can either put a cap, or if it exceeds that, we can always bring it back to you.
Okay.
Whatever your preference is.
Just make a cap at twenty-one hundred or something, call it good. It's nineteen hundred bucks. The full, total survey, I was like, man, I just got it.
I was like, man, I just got expensive quick.
Total survey.
Got it.
Twenty-one hundred?
And again, this was them coming to the city asking.
We need to get this cleaned up anyway, because we're gonna wanna know what that is. So, alright.
Alright, well, I can make a motion to direct the property survey with a cap of twenty-one hundred total, not the city's.
Let me have total.
Second.
Alright, she'll have a second. If it goes over that, guys will come back then, so. Alright, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The unanimous move on. Number ten. Lucas, I guess you got that one to start?
Uh, yes, so this item, uh, as you recall at your last meeting, we had a discussion on Lost River Seventh Edition. So there's a discrepancy from the plat that was presented to the planning commission, and that that was presented to the city council. So the council tabled any action on the plats, uh, and the rezone. So what we have before us tonight is a continuation of the Platts' public hearing, and then, uh, public hearing for the rezone on this parcel. The developer, developers representative is here to discuss the proposed revisions to the plat. Um, I think we have a version of that that we can put on the screen, maybe?
Do the, if you want the highlighted version, or do you want the?
I think the highlighted version's easier.
Do the red line one.
The change is updated.
One's just highlighted, I believe so.
So what you see before you is one that has highlight marks. That is the one that we're talking about, there is a clean version too.
So there is the same. Hi, John.
Here's a list of the, um, changes that were made from the version that was approved by the planning auxiliary commission.
And if you'd, if you'd like me to summarize, uh, the six bullet points, I certainly can.
Sure, why don't you, just so everyone can hear it?
Please.
Okay. Alright, so, um, number one, um, we added these drainage easements that, uh, run along the lot lines. And what's going on is that, uh, on the backyard, right there, um, there's a mature shelter belt. And so, um, in meeting with, uh, the city, I mean with, with Brent and Jim, uh, we went over the, the proposed design, uh, before we kicked that off with our engineering team. And, uh, and we decided to run those laterals, uh, to pick up drainage out of those backyards and run, and run them to the front yards. Um, and we did that to not have, so, we did that to not run the, uh, east-west drainpipe through that shelter belt or, or damage those mature trees. Um, and then we did that, and I guess we did that same thing on the river. So there's one, there's one drainpipe that's right, right here, and then there would be one drainpipe, um, up in block one, I believe. So moving on, number two, I guess I covered that. Um, I covered that with that prior discussion. Um, one thing that changed is, um, as we got into the design for Dogwood Drive. Um, Dogwood Drive is slated to be a connector or a, a road that would connect to the west side of the Cheyenne diversion. And so we, uh, we added five feet to the right of way there, uh, so that we could do a ten-foot multi-use path, together with the thirty-six-foot roadway. And we also added, um, some language on the easement, and called it a multi-use path maintenance easement. So that the city could in the future, uh, enter into that private property to maintain that ten-foot, um, multi-use path. And, um, and did that so that we could place the multi-use path, uh, the proper distance away from the roadway. So that we could have a place for the city to stockpile snow. Um, and then we also, because this, uh, right in here, we just changed some lot dimensions right in here. Dogwood Drive is gonna have to be lifted, um, or it's at a higher elevation, because that is the top of the Cheyenne diversion. And so, in order for Lot One to have access without having a steep grade, uh, we added that, um, that ten, that ten foot to that lot. Number four, we eliminated one, if you wanna scroll down. Uh, we eliminated one lot on the river. Um, and so, for these, um, you know, very high-end river lots, um, our experience is that the people that like those lots just really like their room, and so we made them a hundred and twenty feet wide. And, uh, um, thought that that would be a, that they would self, sell more quickly and, and, uh, probably get a, a better price. Um, number five, we added the, we added the storm pipe right through the pedestrian access easement on the end of Diedrich Drive. And then number six. I guess six would be the same as one and two. Those are all lateral lateral lines that were added to prevent damage to mature trees. And so with that, Mr. Mayor and council, I'd stand for any questions?
Hey, I guess, uh, I see this question in red here, do they want utility here too? Do we want utility there too? We added a twenty-foot utility and drainage easement.
The reason I put that on there is, Jack, in your proposal revisions, you have utility in, in one of your bullets, but it's not on there. So I think we need to add toward utility.
We'd be, we'd be open on that change.
Yeah, and I figured you would. Just meant to put it on there.
What's your timeline of this?
Uh, well, we currently have it this under design, and so, uh, if this is approved tonight, we'd be submitting our petition for improvements. And, uh, looking for, um, city approval of our design documents coming in December. And, uh, we'd wanna get this bit out by, say, February, March for construction in twenty-twenty-two. With the final completion in September of, September, October of twenty-twenty-two.
So you'd be looking at starting building homes in September, October of twenty-twenty-two?
Uh, we would hope to, yes.
I have some concerns. I, I love what you do, um, and I think if I could afford to live in Ross, Lost River, I would. It's very beautiful, I love everything about that area, um. As I was kind of thinking about this, um, I'm very concerned about traffic. We don't have Wall Avenue. We have no way of in and out of this development. And I am wondering if we can, if you would be willing to pause. I don't know how you guys feel, but this is my thoughts. I'm a little nervous about this. And the, the growth at the expense of the residents, and it's gonna be expensive, we gotta get this road built. These are just my thoughts and my concerns. Um, I don't know what you guys are all thinking, but.
The plan is that the road, Wall Avenue, is gonna be worked on next year, so I mean, if the traffic is.
But what about all of the construction, driving, we can't, it can't handle it. We, what are we gonna do?
We're, I, I, I share where you're coming from, and, and this is a discussion that I think needs to be had, or at least opened up. Um, and we're looking for some feedback and
Yeah.
some, some options, because we've had a number of people here that have expressed concerns about the amount of traffic on Wall Avenue. Um, I like that we're looking and being very open to the possibility of bringing some things over the diversion for a possible future outlet to the west, which is a, a good thing, but obviously way down the road and not fitting this timeline. Um, and so that being said, I, I agree, I, I love this layout, I love the size of the lots, I love what we're doing around the river. I, I'm not seeing anything that is terribly out aligned here as far as lots and, and drainage easements. I think a lot of thought has been put into saving a shelter belt, which I really appreciate. I love the fact that we have a multi-use path here, but the, the elephant in the room has been traffic in this area. And the safety of our children and the safety of people in this area. How do we open that discussion so that we really, all of us collectively, have some feedback for those that are living through this difficulty right now? I mean, we had a room full of people here not that long ago, concerned just about dust, not to mention the condition of that road. Which, uh, for those of you that live out there, and we've got several people here that do know that Wall Avenue is really hard, um, to drive down just because it gets beaten to death from construction, traffic, anything, you name it. I guess I'm looking for some feedback on our thoughts on how we support that.
I echo her comments totally. I love this plot, I do.
I see some big improvements here.
We are, we're looking for a dialogue or a conversation as to your thoughts on how do we, how do we handle this with what we're currently at right now? We, we as a city need to figure out how we are going to handle either improving Wall first or Eighty-First Street. Would construction traffic on Eighty-First Street, uh, that, that gravel road destroy that road, currently as it stands right now? Uh, would we have to build it up? Um, would we have to pave it? That's, that's the kinda, uh, conversation that needs to happen right now, which is why I asked, when did you plan on actually starting homes? Because we need to get on the same page as, you know, the people on this side of the table, to help you out as well. Because right now, I don't know if you would want to put a bunch of homes in there and then tell these people, well, you have been on gravel for a little bit, guys. Um, or even worse, a muddy road.
Well, and, and these people, you know, they've been on gravel. I don't know if there were promises made or anything. You know, it is a gravel road, but the road, just in the last couple of years, has deteriorated so significantly that it's posing a, a safety hazard in my mind, and so.
Part of, and, you know, when I was running for council, some feedback that I got from some of the residents were, why do we, can we just think about what we're doing, get a plan, and not just start, okay, and then not have a solid plan of moving forward with the growth? So I, so that's, that's kinda where I'm, I'm, I, I actually, I'm telling you, Jack, I love, I love this. It's beauti, it looks, it's beautiful. Like I said, I wish I could afford to live there, maybe one day, I don't know, but what's your thoughts?
W- well, um, I have so many, I guess, uh, um, so I guess, to go back in time, in two thousand fifteen was the first time we started working on Lost River. We, we petitioned for improvements to Wall Avenue at that time. Um, in two thousand eighteen, when we submitted the Lost River Fifth Edition plat, our second phase. Um, Brent Moore, at our pre-application meeting in April, um, asked us to push pause on that phase of the development um, until we could deal with Wall Avenue. Uh, we did push pause for several months, and, um, and then ultimately lost that construction season. Uh, for the Lost River Fifth Edition, we, we built that out, there was also a corp permit that was needed, um, to, to grade into the, uh, diversion property. Uh, but we, you know, we lost the two thousand eighteen construction season to wait for Wall Avenue improvements. Um, at this time, so I just, you know, I go back, you know, if we had to wait again, you know, we don't really have any river lots that we're offering to the market at this time, and so, um, we obviously wanna provide that. Uh, we're losing some, you know, some, some business by not having something available for those high-end buyers. And so, you know, losing another construction season to wait for Wall Avenue improvements would be disappointing, uh, from a business standpoint. Um, from a coordination standpoint, you know, I think that, a- and just from a homeowner standpoint, would I rather have a lot of construction happen, you know, at once and get a lot done during one summer? Or would I have it drag over, you know, several years? I would probably rather have it, you know, be hard and heavy than drag out for a long time. And so, um, I think maybe the, uh, I guess that would be my preference as, you know, someone that lives there. And I, you know, I think there's also some value in getting these improvements in before we pave Wall Avenue or Eighty-First Avenue. Uh, or Eighty-First Street, I'm not sure. Just because if we bring construction equipment in after we pave, um, it's gonna provide a, you know, premature wear and tear on our, on our roads. What else? You know, I guess those are some of my thoughts off, off the top of my head.
We have a, a lot, and, and I appreciate that, because you, you stated that, well, we have a lot going on in this area, um, that we're looking at for this next year. And how we time this is going to be critical for people's access, their comfort, your future plans for marketing. I mean, you want people to be able to get out there and see these lots, right? You have to be able to show them, you have to be able to have the appropriate signage and whatnot. And if we have a good portion of Wall Avenue already Eighty-First ripped up, and we're limited, um, it adds traffic in one dynamic or another, and I think we need to put some very serious thought into that. Because I think it could have some very serious repercussions, not only on the people in that area, but you as a developer and us, as the city. So, um, I'm not opposed to this particular development. I do have and share, along with some of the rest of the council, some of the concerns on timing. And so, um, I think we really need to have our ducks in a row as far as what's gonna happen when, how we're going to route traffic, which direction it's going to go, and what reasonably can be supported. Because I, I don't have confidence that doing this, along with any other major improvement, will quite be what we want it to be, and I think we're gonna spend more time explaining than actually planning and moving forward, if that makes sense.
I think, okay, so one of the things that's gonna be happening here this week is that, uh, we're, Jeff, myself, Brent, and Jim, Lucas, we're gonna get together and talk about what we're gonna do on Wall, and get done, 'cause there's quite a bit of, uh, there's still quite a bit of, a lot of action items that are gonna come in with Wall, this is one of them. There's a few other things that we've gotta work through as well.
Okay.
I think this can be done. I mean, there's a timing thing, we can, I don't see really an issue that we can't work through the timing on this. Um, and I too would like to, shh, I live out there, okay? I too would like to see construction done and out, and not linger it, because all it does is just bring more traffic through for an extended period of time. I'd rather in, do it, and get out.
I just don't want the appearance that we're just, sure, do something, and then like, oh, we forgot about this, and this, and this. Like, I want things to be, like, planned, and I want it to look like we have our ducks in a row, and I just.
We have talked about this Wall Avenue project for a long time, and we, we know about that the traffic concerns are. That's been known for, when we started talking about this, more so in like twenty-eighteen, twenty-seventeen era, we knew there was gonna be traffic out there. It's a matter of, we had some other issues we had to deal with that delayed the game on this, alright? But we're beyond that now, we can probably start making what we had talked about earlier, how we're gonna put this road together, without overdoing it, you know? without overdoing it, you know, making this Taj Mahal road.
Can I ask then, how are we gonna do this with Wall Avenue at the same time? Like, what's, what's your plan?
One thing it could do, and I'm just trying to put, show both sides or any information is, if it's coordinated properly, it could help with the mobilization of equipment. Because if you have a development going on and you have a couple of different phases going on of Wall Avenue, you might not have a mobilized equipment as much. That takes down a wear and tear of the road, the roads and being enough traffic. So it's just something for you to consider too, is that if you have that work in that area, I, I can't guarantee that it would be less mobilization, but your odds are greater. There would be less mobilization of all that big equipment because you're gonna have it nearby. So just something to consider. And obviously, if this development was to happen next year, there would be a lot of coordination with Wall and what do we do with eighty-first? That would just be another variable in the mix that there would, it would have to be coordinated quite a bit to make sure that you'd have less, you know, not as big of impacts. The dressing, you're very concerned that you're bringing up now.
But this is some of the stuff that we have talked about in the past. We just have to go back and refine what we've talked about and how we're gonna handle this. I mean, that's what this comes down to. It's not like we haven't had a plan or thought about this before. This has been discussed. And now it's gotta be discussed again because where we are and how many people we've got out there in the new development, when the timing, it's gonna be a timing thing. I'm not gonna argue with that, but this has been discussed. Russ, you got anything you wanna add in on this one? You know what's going on back there.
I know what's going on back there. On the plat, it'd be important for us to discuss it because this is what we passed.
Yeah, I know.
But when you're doing that road, I don't care what you come up with. If you don't put a shared use path in, you're making a serious mistake.
There will be a shared use path on that.
And it's gotta go all the way to diversion eventually.
Yeah. Eventually.
Eventually. I use that word.
Yep. Agreed.
But it has to cover, it has to cover the population that's out there.
Correct. So that's part of the deal. That's what we gotta talk about a little bit more on that. That's why I said that the, we've talked about this. I just wanna make sure when we go over the plans again, what we.
I'm the one who stuck my hand up before and said, hey, this one, this one is okay as far as I'm concerned if you do it as a country, country road as far as, instead of a, uh.
The Full Monte, like we had talked about.
Instead of what I got in front of my place.
Yep, I know.
Well, um, you know, thanks, Russ, for your input. Since we allowed Russ to talk during the meetings, can I just, Stephanie said she had a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Um, I, I guess I kind of reiterated my comments at the last meeting about this problem. And I think that everyone agrees, I mean, the road can't support additional development out there until there is more infrastructure to support, to support the area. And I don't know if there's miscommunication between the developer and the city as to when Lost River Seventh was gonna be started or not, but I did have some conversations with Brenton. We don't, do we even have an improvement district for Wall yet?
Yes. Get the old ones.
We have, we have an old one.
Okay.
That's part of the revisiting.
I guess my, my point is, I feel like we are a long way away from a, a final on Wall. And, and while I think everyone probably would like to see it paved in some fashion next year, I don't know that we're, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we're anywhere near, anywhere near that. And you talk about, uh, you know, looping in eighty-first, meaning pave it? What's a time I not, what's, who's paying for that?
We're gonna have discussions about that. It's not, we haven't got any plan put together for it yet. We are gonna talk about it.
So I guess my comment is just, I'll go back to the fact of traffic congestion and infrastructure problems. The road out west, uh, while that may be great, someday would lead to nowhere but north on eighty-first and then right onto Wall Avenue, whether it's tarred or it's gravel. The, the road can't handle the traffic it has today. I, I can't imagine adding more homes. And I think there was some discussion at the last meeting about the rezone and that it wasn't going to be adding in anymore. It's going from R two to R four. I don't know what parameters there are on that, but that would allow potentially multiplex. I have no idea what, we have no idea what happens in the future. Major, I, I would really urge the council, um, I don't know why we have to rush on, on the development when there's only one road that leads to that whole area and it's a one and a half lane gravel road that nobody can even drive on. So I would please request the council to hold on it. And I know it, I don't have any, I don't have any problem with, with the development out there, but I do have a problem with the development out there when it all just pours right onto Wall, passes all of those people, the dust and the, and the issues that everyone on that road already has. I don't need to reiterate them. So I would strongly encourage you, uh, to table. And Brenton had mentioned possibly there wasn't gonna be development till twenty twenty-three. I think the wall needs to be done before there's any further development out there and maybe even eighty-first to, to alleviate. Otherwise, it's on the backs of the current people that have lived here. And I just, I think that has to be balanced a little bit better. Thank you.
Did you have any questions? No, I'm, I'm digesting. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I guess what I'd like to propose, um, you know, the plat is, is really the subdivision document. And, um, you know, if we got that approved, we could move forward with our petition for improvements. Um, we've already met with Brenton, Jim about, um, several times, Andrew Thill, our engineer and our, and myself, about the timing of improvements and coordination with Wall Avenue. Um, we've also talked about annexing additional land in the west to reduce the cost of specials uh, to the Lost River and, or to make the improvement district bigger to defray the cost of special assessments, um, for each homeowner. And I think we.
Are you talking about wall or assessment?
No, additional property that is owned to the west. That he's looking at the possibility of annexation. Is that correct, Jack?
Yep.
Yeah, but to lower the cost to.
The, everyone in the improvement district.
What it would do is introduce more land. If the city had reestablished or established new assessment district for Wall Avenue project, it would introduce more land into that district that Mr. Dwyer is willing to have into that. Just, it sounds like, well, just line to annex in so I could play a role into it and the costs of the specials could be spread out even over a more area.
You're willing to do that to possibly assist with the defraying of those additional costs for improvements?
To spread out the cost over additional, you know, users, both existing and future. But what, you know, I guess what I'm getting at is if our subdivision, if you like the subdivision document, you know, if we could keep this process moving and, um, if, if the council is not happy with the plan of coordination that the city develops, then, you know, I think we should put, push pause at that time.
Well, can, is it possible to like, can we meet then, Jim, Brenton? Like, I want to know like a solid plan before, can we table this till the next meeting at least? Are you okay with that? So that I can visit with the appropriate people and I, I just, I don't know.
This is extremely preliminary in the process.
I know, but I don't.
I do have a question. This, so this hasn't gone through planning and zoning, right? Is that, is that your take on it right now, Russ? This has not gone through planning and zoning?
The, what went through planning and zoning was Lost River Seventh. This is a change from Lost River Seventh, Seventh. This hasn't gone through planning and zoning, but it's, I can't speak for the other four. My guess is if this came back through planning and zoning, the first of all, it has to go through the staff reports to do that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This, uh, and if you send it back to planning and zoning, it's not gonna do, we have nothing to do with Wall.
Right.
No, I'm not. That's not what I'm getting at. It's, it's, it's a review just so that we have your blessing. But, um, I mean, I, obviously she, she's looking for two more weeks. I'm trying to figure out, okay, for one, obviously, yes, we could go on without their blessing.
If, if, if you try to run this back through planning and zoning, you're gonna, you'll, you'll see it in about six weeks.
Oh, okay.
Is that about correct?
Well, wouldn't you have to go through a public hearing because I was, unless I figured anything?
Yeah.
It already had its public hearing.
I don't know what your purpose would be to send it back from planning.
Understood.
Yeah, the, the public hearing is actually still open from last time right now. So this, uh, what he's saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that this is so preliminary in the process, it just allows them to get some of the additional engineering steps done and some of the pre-planning done. But it doesn't authorize the entire development. Is that correct?
Well, if, if Mr. Dwyer is petitioning for improvements and intends on using the special assessment process to pay for those improvements, then you do have quite a big control of implementation of that through that process. I believe that's what he was indicating also to where he had the plat and he's asking for it to keep the ball moving. But then, yeah, the schedules don't align with the Wall Avenue project, like Councilman Brooklyn has brought up about concerns about wanting to make sure there's some time to be able to see how Wall, a phased approach would work with that. Then that would be the time at the discussion when you're going through a special assessment process for that district. You can account for the schedule. Is that correct, what you're saying, Jack? I don't wanna put words in your mouth, so I'm gonna make sure I'm saying it correctly.
Thank you for helping me explain that. Yes, you'll have another look at this. And I think that, you know, approving this would, would give uh, your staff and, uh, your consultants the certainty, um, you know, the direction to come up with a plan for your review and potential approval uh, for implementation of both Wall Avenue and, you know, this project at the same time. And if it can't be done, then you can put the brakes on at that time. But we'd really, you know, like to keep this moving so that if it is possible, we don't miss the best time to bid this project out and increase cost of the project.
He, he does have a point. If you bid it, you know, sooner than later, the pricing is much more likely to be on the lower end than the higher end. I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, we're gonna run into the same thing on Wall Avenue.
Yep.
That's why we gotta get the plan moving again, so we don't get hosed on that.
We do have developments. I'll take, uh, Arrowhead Third, for example. It's a little, it's a different dynamic. But the plat has been approved. The assessment district, I believe, has been approved. Everything's, we're just waiting on the final plans to get through with the engineer or with the developer's engineer. Hopefully bid it over the winter. They're originally wanting to bid it this fall and tried to break ground this fall, but schedules just didn't work out. And now they're looking at construction maybe in the spring. That's last indications I've heard of it. So the developments do at times slow down, you know, from implementation, from when they would like it to be to when reality is. And that's just for a variety of different reasons. And they're all different reasons, but it does happen, so.
I do see a good team building opportunity here. I know that we've not always agreed with everything on this council. And I, I was very interested in, in some of what was potentially put forth for future use in assisting our residents with defraying some costs down the road in future development. So, um, I'm interested to hear more on that. And I see an opportunity for partnership, especially with seeing some of what's going on here and some of the changes that have been made that are positives, I believe, for not only our community, but also for Lost River as it expands. Uh, this is the seventh edition, I understand. And I've seen at some point a master plan. Do you know off the top of your head, Jack, how many more plats there are potentially in Lost River?
I guess, uh, right now we've got it, uh, divided into two more phases after this. You know, they would both be both high-end type, um, product.
Very nice.
Right, river wooded, um, large lots. And so they might take a while to sell. And so that's why we're probably gonna be coming back with two more phases. And this particular project is not, you know, huge project. It's not as big as the fifth edition.
No.
Um, it's just too, you know, basically extending, um, street and utilities. So we're not, we're not talking about a huge project compared to the other two phases.
Right.
Well, I was, um, I just wanna understand better. And so I'm just gonna make a motion to, um, table it for the next meeting. Two weeks is two weeks. It's not that long, really. Um, that's my motion.
Okay, Naomi's making a motion to table. You get a second?
Yeah, you call it a public hearing.
No, we're, we're gonna continue the public hearing then. We're gonna table it.
Yeah, if you're gonna table, okay.
That's why I'm.
I just, I'm sorry. I, I love it. I just want to be able to understand because I'm not understanding, like, how the flow works. And I wanna know how it works. And I, I was told by a resident that if I don't understand something and how it's working, then I should not be voting on it. So I would just make a motion to table it till the next meeting.
And then, um, I guess I'll just give my opinion. I would very hope to God that Wall Avenue was done starting in the spring. Absolutely. And we've, I, we've, I've had like some minor conversations on that. And from what I understand, that is the plan, uh, to devise a final plan and move forward with it. We obviously have a long ways to go. So, um, I do wanna hear some conversations on Wall Avenue very soon. As far as, um, this project goes, if it can be worked out, um, you know, as a group and very meticulously to where this traffic would be routed during the construction, um, down eighty-first and, um, that was well planned and confident with, with the planners and the engineers, then, um, then I, that doesn't bother me at all. I totally understand about, um, the concern of adding more traffic to a road that is a complete disaster. So I want Naomi to be comfortable with it. And I just think that both these projects, I mean, should be getting, should be moving forward.
I agree, I agree with that, but, um, I, I don't want anyone here or Jack to fall over from a coronary. I think we have all kinds of time to discuss that and come up with a plan because this is so preliminary in the process. And, and I think that approving or denying this tonight is not going to prohibit you from asking the questions you wanna ask because I want answers to those same questions. And so I, I like, we're finally seeing some of the things we've been asking for, for how many months here?
Yes.
And I'm not going to say, um, no, we're gonna stop the process. Like I said, don't fall over from a coronary.
The process, Sarah. I said I wanna table it. I did not at all say that I wanna stop the process.
But it does. It stops the process.
I want to do two weeks.
Okay, so let's go. Does anybody wanna do a second on the motion to table?
Do you have a problem with another two weeks, sir? I'm being honest. You can say whatever you want, just.
Well, I'm not gonna be here in two weeks. Um, I'm gonna be out of town. So I, you know, I guess I'd, uh, I think you have another shot at the apple. So I'd rather not talk about the plat in two weeks. Um, I'd rather talk about, you know, the coordination of Wall Avenue and, and this project and whether it can be done. And I'm happy to do that anytime. So I guess that would be my, my answer.
Because we also do have other times, or another event coming up here where we can do this as well as when we do the improvement district. We have another conversation about this.
Right, so if we, if this was approved, I think we could coordinate something and come up with a plan uh, with your staff and your consultants. um, with your staff and your consultants, um, and have additional conversations and bring it back to the council for, for approval, potentially, if it was satisfactory.
Because technically, what we're doing tonight, folks, is we are approving the plat. This does not, I mean, if we're gonna get right down to brass tacks, this is about the plat and how it looks. We get to the improvement district, we can maybe have a little bit more conversation about the wall impacting and things like that. But this is to approve the plat, what he's designed out here tonight, the changes that have been made, and that's what we're discussing here this evening. So, all right.
Let me ask the question. Do you have any desire to, to forego the special assessment district and try to do it on your own? That, because obviously that is our final stopping point, and you can obviously get around that if we approve, approve this plat. Is that right?
We have no interest in doing that.
Okay.
All right, one more time. Naomi put a motion out to table this discussion. Is there a second? Okay, if not, that motion dies. So, is there anybody else who wants to talk about this this evening? Otherwise, I'm gonna close the public discussion. I'm gonna close the public discussion on the plat. I'm gonna just close it on the rezone. All right, so then I need, uh, can we talk a little bit more, guys? Have you got any more questions about this? Like I said, we are talking about the plat this evening. Jack has made the changes to it. So they made the updates that we were talking about from the last time we tabled this. Any other questions on it? Okay.
Like I said, I think it's beautiful. I just, I just need.
I guess, um, I know that the mayor doesn't like when we get off track, but.
Just trying to keep us on track.
Relates to Wall Avenue. So can we just talk just quickly about what that process might look like?
Multiple phases.
And so where?
West of the river. Still have access to where it's open, west, uh, Westbrook, Blazier, Rivers Edge. Multiple phases west of the river to, to incorporate ways for Westbrook, Blazier, Rivers Edge to come out. Getting through maybe the first entrance to Lost River. We get up to the first entrance to Lost River, then people would start going east, go further to the next entrance, and people would still go east, and some go west. And then we get through the third entrance in the Lost River, and that's where we stop with this current project, to just get through that intersection. Sticking point is, if you're gonna loop through traffic on eighty-first, eighty-first is gravel right now. Didn't have the best luck with that last time. We tried a lot of time, energy, and effort in maintaining that road. A lot of money in the building a road. The expectation for gravel roads is very high in, in, in around Portland, so.
This is a little different, though, because we're not writing, routing the entire city's traffic through it.
And, and also, I, I need to know very definitively who handles the maintenance on eighty-first? Is that the city or the township?
Shared, but mainly city. It is one of those dynamics, eighty-first right now, the, from Wall Avenue going north half mile is Warren Township. Going north the next half mile up to seventy-six is City. So there's similar dynamic what we were dealing with earlier.
I'm not dealing with this again.
Jack, are you, are you moving a lot of dump trucks in and out full of clay or fill? Or is that pretty much done? Because I know you, at one point, there was a ton of clay back there.
Well, we use a lot of that clay to lift the northwest part of the development. So, uh, um, just around the pond was all lifted. And then, uh, I think we, there would be a pile of clay that would have to be moved, but it's, I don't think it's that large. Eighty-first Street was used in the first and second construction, construction projects up there.
So if we had construction going on on Wall Avenue, wouldn't that keep more of the, the trucks out of the city and around on eighty-first?
They, they would all be sharing. The residents and the trucks would be sharing.
Yep.
Which, which kinda ties into my point of all these dump trucks. Um, I know KPH brought in an absolute ton of fill, and they helped maintain that road just because the residents still had to use it. Kinda what I'm getting at. Um, I don't know how much fill you have to bring in or out, is kinda what I'm getting at.
We probably wouldn't be bringing it out, um, using eighty-first if we brought it anywhere. We'd bring it to the west side of the Cheyenne diversion and, and/or Stock Pellet farther southeast in Lost River. So there's not, we, we probably wouldn't be using Wall Avenue or eighty-first except for maybe that, that corner. We, we already started moving fill on the west side of the Cheyenne diversion. Do we have funds for that area? So we wouldn't be, like I said, we wouldn't be using eighty-first or Wall Avenue from, for exporting fill.
Okay.
And just so you know, I brought, here, see, I brought up the aerial image of Wall Avenue, so Wall Avenue's right in the middle here. Uh, kinda about seventeen is right here. And eighty-first, Cheyenne diversion are right here. So I just wanted to give you a visual, and it's probably a little small if you're across the room there, but, um, what Jim was talking about phasing, we do recognize seventeen to Cheyenne River is gonna be one phase. We know that. And that gets into, okay, from the bridge over to Cheyenne going west. At what point, we recognize probably up to Westbrook, you'd have one phase. Another phase would be how far over we go, so we're looking at a couple of phases here.
So, like, how long does one phase take, like, on average? I guess I don't know this.
How far can we get, in reality, how far could we get next year, next construction season?
Depending upon when you bid it and when you start working on it.
You might be able to.
We could probably do three phases for sure. East of the river, so east of the river, and the southern could be done in turn. Those two could be done in turn. And you could probably do the first phase, if not the first and second phase. I'm just throwing this out there, because I, you've thought about it, but I haven't, like, really seriously thought before I thought about it. You could probably get through Westbrook, Blazier, get through Rivers Edge, the first entrance to Lost River. And then we could, once that's back open, we'll go east. You could knock out that later section later in the year. Take out the rest of, the rest of the wall.
So if we wanted to start this right away, it's now November, what is the soonest we would be able to put this project out for bids?
So where we left it was, there's gonna be another public inquiry meeting. So after we gather our, gather ourselves, we have another public inquiry meeting, and then we move forward with it at that point. So it would be probably February March, bid opening. Just by the time you get permitted and other stuff done. Some of it's been in the process, some of it's been paused just from the first go-around to keep, so we work with it. Only if it's something that may or may not help.
Yeah, and I mean, as far as the first part of Wall Avenue, phase one, there's no doubt in my mind personally that it would need to be a curb and gutter city street with sidewalk on one side at least.
Shared use path on one side. It is the plan.
But yeah, we.
So ownership is being determined on the, what we'll call phase one, the east side. Their land, legal department, their land department is working on the ownership of those parcels. There's some oddball lots within and amongst that corridor from the river before we stop.
Within the state limits, you get up to just past the first entrance of Wall. We're working on, you know, we've had some conversations with the property owners of Jubilee there. We'll continue to have some more conversations with them or reach out with them. But, you know, for next year, I'm looking at, we could at least get to pass that first entrance there.
Yeah, because once you get, like Frank said, once you get past Rivers Edge, we're back at and half, or third to third.
But our absolute worst area for a wall, as everybody knows, is from the first entrance of Lost River to the bridge. That's where you have the absolute worst conditions in the road. Because that's where it gets the most traffic. It gets the most traffic and, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
There isn't a lot on our ground on this one. East side's already got water, it's got sewer. We replaced the water main in two thousand and seventeen. We had the sewer lining in sixteen, so there's just some storm sewer on the east side of the river. We get west, the only bit of sewer we have is to brick some out for Westbrook just for future planning. And then water mains, Casper, and they upsize that as part of the fifth edition. And then if we do go with a curb and gutter section, then we have to put storm sewer in at some point. But if it stays a verbal section, you ditch it.
Well, I have been anxiously waiting to hear more on this project, and I would like to put the pressure on to start this. My opinion is as quickly as possible.
Yep, that's why we're here on the meeting on Wednesday. Get some of those mock balls off, some of those documents, and start picking that up again. All right. Any other questions on that? Is that Jack in with you? All right, so, what do you guys wanna do about the plat and the rezone?
I will, uh, make a motion to approve the plat. I don't have any issue with the situation as long as we're, we have our ducks in a row and we have opportunity to make sure this is coordinated extremely well.
Okay. Can I get a second on Chelsea's motion?
I'll make the second with the same terms, that we know what the heck is going on, when it's going on, and that the thought process is started between both entities.
Okay. All right, so we'll vote on the plat, then. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. We're out with the passes. The class passes. All right, it's for the rezone. You get a motion on that?
I'll make the motion on the rezone. I have no issues with the rezone. Um, these are all single-family?
Yes, correct.
That's what I need to confirm. Um, I'll make that motion.
Okay, sir, makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea goes a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All right, rezone's approved. It's gone to eleven. Jimmy, you got that one?
All right, Mr. Mayor. I was contacted by the West Harbor Public Schools last week. Lots of boulevard trees along eighty-second Avenue, athletic communities. Uh, being that there's been quite a few discussions on boulevard trees with the city council in the past month, we're here to best to just, uh, talk to the city council for discussion. Um, as you can see in the packet that I handed out today, uh, their last page is a picture of the area in question. So what you've got there on the picture is, uh, looking west at the intersection of City Bridge Street and eighty-second Avenue. To the right is the new high school, and to the right is the, uh, practice fields, I assume. Not practice fields for, for this point. So what I'm showing you here is that the back of the curb, you can see that, and then we have the boulevard. And in the boulevard, there's the streetlights with power cables running to them. Below that is storm sewers, so there's storm sewer pipes running in there. Then there's a shared use path, and then a couple feet, and then that's the fence to the athletic community. So there's really no good place to put trees in that corridor. So the school has, uh, given a couple of options as to where they're going to transplant those trees. Or they haven't been planted yet. They will plant them at a couple of spots. Uh, one is north of the water tower. Uh, it's the south side of seventy-ninth Avenue, the northwest corner of the high school prop, high school site. We've got four trees there installed within the school's property. And then the other is along, uh, the Lakeview Drive extension, which is in the southwest corner of the high school. And we've got seven trees on the, uh, at a thirty-five foot spacing, twelve feet off the sidewalk. These would be on the schools, on the school's property. They would be in the right way, because we have the same constraint issues along that, along that corridor as well. So, um, it's pretty self-explanatory, once we met in the rain last week to look at it. And, uh, there's really just no room for those, for those trees in that boulevard. But keeping the plantings, keep, keeping them in the same area, I think is a good compromise.
Okay, first question. I want to know how this happened. Was the design not correct? Did something change that we put power and sewer in there and it wasn't supposed to be? How did this happen?
They put, they needed so many plant units on their plans, and they put them where they normally would go. And it's independent of our, independent of our project, or independent of the second avenue project. So, just a matter of, typically, they go to boulevard. There's a boulevard there, and if you look, probably didn't look at the underground, see that there was, um, underground issues there or storm sewer underneath the boulevard.
Yeah, because you can't plant those, I, I go down there every single day, and I know exactly what that looks like, including the mud that is tracked all across the sidewalk, because this picture clearly is from a couple days ago.
Yep.
And I was questioning how, on God's green earth, trees were going to go into that area when you have streetlights there. I know that there's pipe underground, and that fence is, like you said, just a couple feet from that sidewalk. So this is just something where the trees look pretty on the drawing?
Pretty much.
Okay, we need to think about that moving forward.
This is another one of those where the right-of-way is so much, that you gotta cram a lot of stuff into right-of-way when you take ten feet of it and put up a shared use path, which makes a lot of sense on that athletic facility and the high school.
It really does, because you're gonna have a lot of traffic there.
It burns up our right-of-way and boulevard very quickly. And this is actually, the road is actually offset a little bit to the south of our river, right?
Okay. This plan along Lakeview with the trees is awesome. I'm really excited seeing that, because I think that that's going to offer some west, northwest shade to that parking lot, some prevention of snow and things like that, which I think is a plus. Um, again, that's another park that I go down quite frequently. There's, there's a lot of areas here that I cover in our city. I try to go a different direction every single day. And I can tell you, I'm still questioning the proximity on page P-two for the relocation for those trees. This is the, and correct me if I'm wrong, is this the water tower area? What is this that is right next to it?
Circle, the circle to the south?
Yeah.
That's the water tower.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so there's a piece of property. You can see that the water tower's on a square parcel.
Yep.
And in that area to the north, that, that little jut out is on school property.
Yep.
Um, it's spaced accordingly because there's piping coming in and out of that water tower. So, there's a bunch of water, or trees on top of water main. So.
Yeah.
That's why there's space the way they are to fit them in that area.
What kind of trees are these? Do we know?
I don't know what they will be. We generally have five types of trees that we plant, um, with a mix. So it will be, I'll dump some, use, um, actually some real fruit trees. And we use, um, things like crabapple or, um, maple. Um, we're trying to avoid ash, because we're on our own around trees right now.
Yep.
Good call.
And we did reach out to Casper Water just to verify that they were okay with the placement of those trees. It's not on their property, but because of the easements to the water lines that are up there, we wanted to make sure that they would have any issues when we were coming today. If they would go on that, um, that Jesus seventy-nine.
Um, so the, the storm sewer is, you know, very, that'd be where it'd typically be at. So the sidewalk is four feet wider than a typical sidewalk?
Yeah, six feet wider than the sidewalk.
So a typical sidewalk is four feet?
Four and a half feet, yeah.
Okay. So that extra six feet to put in large oaks and stuff, really, I mean, that's all you need for, because you're worried about roots and stuff, right, in the sewer?
Yeah, and plus, um, yeah, that and the power line for the power, the streetlights runs.
The, the electrical is not deep there. I know, because I was there when they installed it.
Yeah, so the roots get intertwined with the electrical. That's not good. It's conduit, so it's not good. And that, same thing with those, the roots getting down. The storm sewer's not terribly, terribly deep there. And that, same thing with those, the roots getting down, the storm sewer's not terribly, terribly deep there, so that's, that's another thing to plant on top of that.
It just seems like a real common problem that we're maybe gonna run into. Like having issues with those roots and the utilities and, yeah.
It's boulevard trees, really have brought out some bad this year with the drought. We've done some work around mature trees, not in Horace, but in different cities, and there's become tr, transverse cracking, or longitudinal cracking. And we've had two testing companies look at it, and both of them said that the mature trees, the root system is sucking the moisture and it's compressing.
Yep.
And creating those longitudinal cracks. So boulevard trees are kind of a good thing and a bad thing.
Yeah.
My neighborhood is got a whole bunch of mature trees and there are defined cracks, to the point where last night, took a tree, I took pictures of it, the middle street, something where you can see, it looks like those mature trees are just sucking it on this side.
Yeah. So I don't know if there's anything that other cities have done differently with their trees and how they, you know.
There's lots of that to see, I think.
Yeah, it's a.
What type of tree you put in the boulevard, helping against, same discussion we had with, there were third edition, they were being put around those light holes and that type of stuff. It's not an uncommonly mature trees in the boulevards buckle sidewalks.
So, and then, so the trees were moved to Lakeview, do we not require boulevard trees on Lakeview in the first place, or?
Not until they're built.
Not, no, not, not on city projects, you don't put boulevard trees.
Well, but I mean for the developer or the owner?
So I, what was your?
Just plant units?
You didn't have anything along there as far as trees?
We didn't right now.
So it was just the plant unit numbers were met by not going on Lakeview, so they were moved to Lakeview?
Well, in boulevard trees, in some jurisdictions are separate from your plant.
Yeah, I guess that was kind of what I was getting.
But like in our case, which again, we never have to know, I suppose, through the city's process, but like the Lakeview extension wasn't even a part of the, um our, our original plan. We had, our original plan showed that connector like running parallel with the church property, I don't think even.
Gotcha, yeah.
So now that we've got the connector kind of running through there, it has changed the dynamic a little bit. Part of our issue, we got a little bit ahead of the city, even then, you know, we went out with preliminary designs for, that tunnel's called eighty first. And so we've had some other coordination issues between our installed improvements and the city's improvements for the street. Elevations, for example, were off between the connector for the, our fire lane around the building. Um we had to tear some concrete out and sort of regrade it to, so the slopes matched. I don't know how much of a difference there was, but it was significant. So there was some engineering kind of that was done after the fact, that if Lakeview, or if eighty second had been in before we started, I think some of this would have been apparent and could have been done with sort of on the front end, and now we're dealing with it on the back end unfortunately. But um to date, we don't show any plant units along Lakeview. If you want, or would expect plant units along, we, and we need to have that conversation too, because that would be a different. We would need to find another place then to put the plant units coming out of eighty second.
Cause with our, our existing ordinance, plant units are requ, boulevard trees, I mean, are required in commercial?
We'll talk to your forester.
No. But just to the ordinance, what, how it's written, yes.
In residential and commercial, it's not industrial.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and it seems like a site this large would have a lot of plant unit requirements.
Plant units would be done during the planning process, and that's why.
The permitting?
Require.
Permitting process.
Well, I think plating process, cause we used to require a landscape plan.
For, for just pla, site, planning?
For, for new developments.
For boulevard trees?
Not a new development, school boulevard trees weren't put in.
No, I'm saying a landscape plan during the development phase for the actual site, boulevard trees are required regardless.
Yeah, but yeah, obviously you're gonna have a building plan before you would have the plant units, the landscape plan, so it'd be during permitting then? Either way, it doesn't matter, I'm just, I guess, wondering, uh just bringing up the questions for conversation, you know? I mean, we've had some conversation about requiring boulevard trees, so.
And we had fully intended for the style of like eighty second, it's just at this point, and we still could, it just doesn't seem to make sense.
Yeah.
Probably works, it's, they're worried.
No, that's not worth.
Yeah, no.
That's not worth.
No, there's no point on that.
Yeah. I agree, I mean, we don't wanna cause problems, that the trees are gonna have to get cut down or whatever, we wanna be thoughtful with it.
Or they'll cause issues down the road at this point, so. Alright, any other questions on this guys, or you wanna go, what's proposed?
Motion to approve the, the new tree plan.
Okay.
A second.
Chelsea makes a motion, Naomi does a second, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, going on twelve, Jim, you got this one?
Number twelve is water sewer storm sewer improvement district. Uh twenty, the water sewer storm is three hundred and forty district.
Easy for you to say.
Twenty twenty two, I know, they all draw them together. What you have before you is the free learning engineering report, it talks about project, existing conditions, proposed improvements, approvals, permits, method of construction, special assessic district information and project financing, so what we have is industrial industrial additions, consists of the first, second, and third additions. Uh the first addition was constructed privately, so our plan for that area would be to, which is basically the north-south industrial drive and about three hundred and fifty feet east of there on Frontage Road and Industrial Drive. Most streets were constructed privately in two thousand and nineteen, that street is in fair to good condition, probably more than do it. But crossfoils developed in the spring, we've also had some subgrade graders that have been entered during the construction of some adjacent commercial properties down there. So in that area, we would go through and do common excavation, which means we excavate the top six inches of material off, subgrade trap, which means we disc up and make uniform and we, it's there and compact it to a proper, with proper moisture. We install six inches of area base class five, and compact it to a uniform cross section, and then we pave it. Right now, we're either gonna do a hopatous pavement or reinforced concrete. I'd like to visit with some of the landlords out there, just get an idea of what their uses are. We've got, been hearing from, from the city that there are a lot of people interested in those properties and they potentially are ready to submit something, just to get an idea of where we're at with, with that. So I think we would bid it both ways, just to get an idea. The area was constructed in two thousand nineteen and twenty, would be everything east of that eight hundred and fifty feet. And that has a six inches of area base or surface course with the top two inches chemically treated with a base one product. Now, base one product, um basically it's in the strength of another inch or so of, of area.
An alignment or what?
No, it's called, it's a, base one is the product name.
Okay.
It's a chemical that's produced by Team Lab and it gets incorporated into the area, works with the water and it hardens up, kind of like a, similar to a lime or a cement.
Lime or a cement tree?
Cement, so that's already in place out there. So um with that being said, we don't have any water and sewer services in those lots because they're very, very large. If we do pave it, we're gonna have to put some stub outs on there, so each lot that doesn't have a water and sewer service, we're gonna put one into it. So the larger lots, we're gonna put multiple into it unless we're told otherwise by the person who owns, owns the lot. And as you can see, I have a cost estimate here, it's very expensive, but when I got to looking at it, I had somebody else look at the numbers because I was trying to scratch my head on it. It's over two miles of paving, and we're right around two miles of paving out there, so.
It doesn't look like it, but it's a lot.
It is, yeah, so for asphalt, uh total project costs around two point four million, two point five, and concrete was three point, three point seven. So I do have some, some numbers, there are some budgetary numbers in here, uh just we don't know what some of the pricing is going to do over the year, over the summer, but, or winter. But um we do have that, I have a little bit factored in there.
I'm hoping the concrete gets a little tighter.
Yeah, yeah, it might.
It might, yeah.
It might, um the, the section would stay the way it is right now, it is a rural section with open ditches and the top twenty-four feet would be paved up for that. And we would have to put shoulders or swaps on the outside of that. As you can see in the back of the report, we've got the potential special assessments based on the methodology that we've been using and breaking it out for asphalt and concrete. The orange is for asphalt and the blue is for concrete. So the first map is an overall of the entire area, the second one is zoomed in on the shops and rockstone area, just cause those numbers got kind of, got a little together when it was printed. So same for both of those. The next step would be to put this out for a petition of the public people, this is a basically a wa, uh street project, and street projects are protestable, so. The only big one are sewers, the service lines. Service lines are gonna be four inch, probably four inch, um gate valves and services were six inch coming up on the mains. Like I said, those will only be put into lots that don't have them. And it would be assessed, those would be, way we work the assessments on those ones, it's at each, we have a sewer to the water service, we pay this much. And the street, the assessment for the streets was done by the area of the lot. Just because the front footages are so.
Large.
Out there, and there's quite a few that have multiple, multiple adjacent frontages, and we went with the area just as a starting point and that, so.
Instead in lieu of front footage because?
Look, there's multiple have, have two or, or.
Quarter.
Right.
Quarter lots. So in the past, in like lots over fifty, we've used one, one frontage and the side lot just gets absorbed into the overall. Here, we would get rid of that by taking, taking it to an area, an area assessment.
How does this line up with our new policy that we have not put in place yet?
So as far as the water services, the sewer services by the each is, is the way that's going forward. I got the, we do list streets by front footage, but these are so large with multiple sided corner lots. We just felt that it would be better to propose it as an area assessment to try to kind of rein it in, rein it in a little bit, be a little more fair than the one we've got three, three front footages, so. Um this doesn't have any load factoring or anything like that, cause there isn't a residential one, it's just all your commercial or industrial, light, light, light industrial.
And I, if I remember correctly, they were all aware that this was something that was gonna be.
So right now, we've created the district.
Yeah.
We've us, put together the report that outlines what we wanna do, we've got the cost of the proposed assessment. So now, being that this isn't a water or sewer project, they'll have the opportunity to protest. So the protest period.
They signed an agreement.
Yeah, they signed an agreement though, remember Jim?
Well, we have been in communications with a handful of property owners within this area and also properties within the third edition, within the developer's agreement. I believe that had a part where the, uh when the properties are sold, they waived their ability to protest.
And they agreed.
They agreed to have it paid within five years or seventy-five percent.
It would be paid within five years or seventy-five percent, right?
So they waived, they waived their ability to protest, all the properties within the third edition, is my understanding.
The developer did that.
The developer did.
The developer executed the individual.
Yeah, I don't know, but that was with the developer.
The lots, like he was supposed to be pursuant to the developer's agreement. And that was a discussion when we were, when the council was deciding whether to prove that was how to get the developer to get those agreements signed, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Yep, well, we'll find out.
I do know that in talking with some of the property owners that have purchased lots within third edition, they are aware of the paving. So I know it's been come, it's come out, but that's where agreements, yeah.
That's a problem.
Yeah, so what do you do then, if for some reason?
Standard process?
The pro, just go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we should obviously ask to see those agreements if.
Wanted to.
Right.
Have the largest landowners been contacted?
We have been working with the developer, who's majority, or has owned quite a few of the lots there. Uh we have talked with them, Mr. Kelly Visto.
You have?
Also talked, we've talked with Kelly Visto, we've talked with uh Brooks Home Properties, they own two of those larger lots.
Yep.
And some of these properties along, uh the commercial properties along County Road fourteen, for that frontage road there. Also, Prairie Scale has been, they, they are aware of the project.
Yep.
We did not have the totals until just today here.
I see that.
But yes, this has been a, project has been communicated some, and they'll be notified again here af, after this, I guess that's the next step.
So regardless of the type of improvement, the way the new special assessment policy reads, then everybody will be notified upfront of what their proposed or potential assessment would be.
Excellent.
That is, we have this for review and for, for their view of whether.
I think that's extremely important while they still have an opportunity to protest, so that everybody's on the same page. We've been working really hard to get to this point, provide some transparency and communication around this process. There've been countless hours put into this, this is the first time I've seen a document like this and I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I think if we continue this, it's gonna be big. I am gonna ask you to check your math on the right-hand side of those pages, um just because I'm seeing some significant discrepancies on the left versus the right. And I don't know if it just didn't print right, or if I'm misunderstanding, or maybe it's correct, and I'm just having it used to the new process.
Which one are you thinking?
When I'm, when I'm looking at the blue versus the orange on the very first page of each, on the right-hand side, there's a hundred and ten thousand dollar assessment and on the blue, it's a hundred and eighteen. The parcel that's immediately below it says two oh eight, and then it goes to two fifteen. But if I look at the left-hand side, the parcels that are there go from ninety to one thirty-two, one thirty-one, eighty-nine to one thirty-one and one oh seven to one sixty-three, which is a fifty thousand dollar difference versus the properties on the right-hand side, which is about an eight thousand dollar difference.
Isn't that?
I will double check that, but there is a difference in some don't get that water and sewer control.
And that might be the difference.
Yeah.
But I, I wanna confirm that, because all the properties on the left-hand side with the frontage, I think that's where that might be coming in. But I'm seeing a discrepancy on the right-hand side and I just wanna confirm it.
Gotcha.
So simple text message or something later, just letting me know, cause I know I'll get calls on that.
Alright, any other comments or questions on this one? If not, let's go through these one on the panel, we're looking for somebody to do a motion to accept the resolution approving the preliminary engineering report.
Make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll make the second on that preliminary report.
Alright, so Jeff made a motion, Sarah did a second, all in favor say aye.
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 And it's everybody on a, if the motion passes, resolution renaming the improvement district.
I told that it's not necessary.
We did add it minutes.
Got it, okay, just double checking. And then we'll go to C, resolution of necessity. I'm assuming, Jim, you went through the effort, it's necessary, right?
Well, okay, so again, people can private comment.
This resolution directs our, it's gonna publish in the paper, right, third day, commentary.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I can make a motion to do the resolution of necessity to the paper.
Okay.
Second.
Chelsea does a second, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carriers.
Whatever the board puts it in there.
Mm-hmm.
That's another story.
Alright, one thirteen.
Alright.
Letters.
Water sewer storm, street improvement district number twenty twenty-one dash two is teradata's third edition. Why I have this on agenda for you tonight is that the project is behind the schedule, I would say they haven't got any asphalt pavement down yet. Kerwin gutter is ongoing, they had a concrete pour today. As you can see, the weather is not getting any warmer outside, matter of figuratively speaking, it may have some highs and some lows. So there's a pretty good chance that they are going to get the entire thing paved this year. The completion date is the end of November, but in discussions with the design engineer and their developer, they said they thought that that would be more like a, get it done by the middle of the month or the beginning of the month and then use the rest of it to finish out towards the end, finish up the loose ends, have it done by the end of the year. It doesn't look like that's gonna happen, so one of the things that's gonna come forward is, and it hasn't yet in any type of written communication, it's just been a phone call to me, is what is the city going to allow for a so-called temporary completion, allow homes to get built in there? And I said, I'm not gonna tell you that, I'll bring it up to the city council. My stance, for what it's worth, is it needs to be done. That's where I stand, so.
I mean, that's kind of our stance. I mean, that's kind of our stance has been forever on this.
Our stance is bad, it has to be lit, it has to be signed, it has to be paved and everything else. We potentially, there's some sidewalk or something like that that I can see not forcing in, but the idea of not having a road done, it's not interested me at all. I'm assuming it doesn't interest you either.
You've set a dangerous precedent if you even think about allowing someone in there temporary, especially after what we just went through at Maple Lakes.
Typically, we don't let builders in permits until utilities have gone in.
Yep.
So gas and electric, we don't issue that typically. It was pretty rare, so.
Jack, you got something to add?
Oh yeah, on behalf of Peaceful Plains, the developer of Terragardens. We did sell the third edition to Thompson Homes in our discussions with them. They weren't planning on building homes in there this year. And so they, they were hoping to get it all done this year so that they could start marketing the property for twenty twenty-two builds. So I think we do have a phone conference tomorrow morning, but I, I don't know if it's E. I don't know who you've been talking, talking with.
Andrew.
Okay. I, I don't think that there's a huge urgency to get in there. Obviously, we want the project done, but.
Right. Okay.
So this came up last Thursday. I wanted to get it on the agenda just in case it started gaining some traction, just so you guys are thinking about it. If something does move quickly, but I'll keep you updated, it was just an informational item anyways. It wasn't any action, so we'll just see what, what they present to us and we will address it at that time.
All right, sounds good, let's move on to fourteen.
All right, the next item is water improvement district number twenty twenty-nine seven in connection to Casper. This is change order number one. This is extending the completion date from May, let's see here, November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, to substantial completion of May second, twenty twenty-two and ready for final payment on June one, twenty twenty-two. We've discussed this one in the past, has to do with the meter pit being manufactured and delivered. Project is essentially complete except for the meter pit area. They've been done for a week or two now with what they were able to get done this year. So I have no doubt that they will, as soon as that meter pit gets here, they will all put the concrete, get the concrete pad in and get it all put together, so.
Yeah, we knew it was coming.
Yeah, this one, like I said, we've already discussed this one, it's the same. They were comfortable with the time that they had originally submitted, so.
This is the one that they notified us right away. This is the one they released before they even had the final on, yeah. There's no cost change, no nothing.
No, just delay of game.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve that change order.
Second.
Sarah made a motion, Jeff did a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Lucas, you got fifteen.
This is a quick one, this is just a second reading of the electric franchise ordinance for Casper Electric. No changes from the first reading, so this is just the second reading of that ordinance to make it effective.
All right, you guys got any questions on that? Nothing changed, so I'm just looking for a motion to accept.
So moved.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, go to sixteen. Same song and dance.
Same song and dance to this one, this is just the ordinance that changed with time. Alcohol sales could be unsafe or it's consistent with century code. No changes.
No changes, okay. Looking for a motion to accept.
I will make that motion to accept the, like, your distribution ordinance.
Naomi makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea's got a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brent.
Now you start it fast. Next item here is in regards to selling equip, city equipment. This is, all three items here have been replaced, referring to two different plow trucks and then a lawnmower. Like I said, these have been replaced already. What we do have to do is have council approval to be able to auction off any items. According to such code, we're supposed to auction those items off. Gives anybody from the public opportunity to be able to bid for those. If we feel, if we believe the value of them could be in excess of, I believe, twenty-five hundred dollars. So being that these are plow trucks, two of them are, are old ones. And the lawnmower I'm not as concerned about, but being that we're doing the plow trucks, we don't want to auction them off at the same time.
That internationally, you should let the Smithsonian know about that one. They might want it in the museum.
Yeah. So we, we would, I know our public works staff would appreciate being able to get these auctioned off and be able to have the extra space in our shop.
You think?
So.
Which auction house are you using?
We've met with Steffes, S-T-E-F-F-E-S.
Yep.
They are looking at auction, put it on auction November nineteenth, finish date November twenty-fourth. It would be an online auction. And then their commission being the valuation, value is expected to be exceeding three thousand dollars. It would be eight percent.
Eight percent?
Eight percent is the commission, that's not really online for auction.
They also give a buyer's commission?
Yeah.
They give a lot of money over there.
The total shouldn't exceed thirteen or fourteen percent though, correct?
No, it says eight percent of sale.
Buyer's is ten percent.
Does it now? Because just a couple of years ago, I know they were at seven. And they're at ten now?
It depends on the value of the item from our side. Oh, you're saying the buyer's side, yeah.
Could we try to post these ourselves first before we auction? Just thinking outside the box.
I believe it would have to be a sealed bid approach to do that, if you do that. So pass away as you're looking at, we could.
I'd say we want to boot these out before winter, that's the only thing.
If we post them on our website, we'd, I believe, my understanding is we're going to do a sealed bid process, bidding process. You don't know if you're going to get the bids or not. That's, the marketability of this is tremendous compared to what we could do.
I'm just asking because I know that all these auction houses, I mean, there's several that you could go to.
I would be surprised if we get a lot.
Their fees are typically similar, so.
Yeah. I didn't see anything online on this. Steffes, they have with our staff, our public works staff, they're taking pictures of the equipment. So they are, they would be ready to go, it's my understanding to put it on auction, they do, so.
Yeah, we need to get them out.
All right.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Jeff makes that motion?
Bless you.
Excuse me.
Can I get a second?
Yeah, sure, I'll second.
Okay. Naomi does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, let's go on. Land use ordinance revisions, Brent, let's go.
Okay, this one is just more of a asking for general discussion. Action would be referred into if you would want us to, or go back to the planning commission and have conversations with them to make potentially some changes to ordinances in our land use. The first one, I'll actually start with street bonds. The first one is when a new home is being built or a property is, you know, a commercial building or a new home, anything is being built, we require a one thousand dollar street bond. That one thousand dollar street bond is refundable after the project is all done and if the street isn't damaged. Now, if the street is damaged, you know, we'll have Jim go out there, our building inspector's staffs go out there. If there's damage, Jim will prepare cost estimate of what it will take to repair it and we deduct what the estimate is from that street bond. If the damage exceeds a thousand dollars, we just keep the thousand dollars, we don't go get more. By the time you factor in the costs and time that we have, and I don't have down to specific numbers for you, I apologize on that, but wanting to have the overall discussion. By the time you put in the engineer's cost, inter reviewing that and preparing the estimate and our staff time, finance, dealing with it, also having the liability on our books. It, it doesn't pay for itself. We're sinking our costs into something because we're taking those repairs. But then are we doing the repairs right away? We're not. So what we're asking for is consideration, we could review this deeper and have a deeper analysis for you, but to review this, bring back council of consideration about just about getting rid of street funds. Other communities in area are not doing street bonds, is my understanding, that's the feedback that we've been getting. However, we'll continue, we could look into this deeper. But that has been a complaint that we've had from quite a few folks that build properties, builders, commercial side and residential. Also the, it does take a while for us to review them, which we typically review them in Thatcher, like once or twice a year to do the refund of the street bond. So being that we have quite a few more homes being built in our community, this is going to be a bigger challenge every year as we have more houses built here, more things happening, even worse. So I wanted to bring it up, food for thought, see, see what the council has for this. We could also engage the planning commission if they have any input on that. Typically, planning commission won't get into that side of the street bond side as much, but we can always ask them for their perspective.
How often is there damage to the road?
Hmm, Jim, with, how often is there damage?
I believe it's about seventy percent of the street bond is returned.
There are certain offenders who are worse than others. It's probably, like you said, by three or four, ten.
I want to say about seventy percent of the street.
So when they go through, we evaluate the curb and gutter. You know, if the concrete's curb is cracked, concrete cracks, we don't have any, well, anything back from that. If it's falling where it's popping off, we'll lift all four feet of curb and gutter based on the current prices that we've been getting from the city. And if it's a displaced, where the crack is displaced and it's holding water, we'll, we will, same thing as the front end, four foot deep up, just let that galley equipment in or whatever else, that sort of all. And then we evaluate the front yard of that driveway because, not driveway, the street front, there's a lot of delivery trucks coming up, haul rayers. And they'll just put them down wherever. And tongue jacks are another one that's a big issue. They'll put on fresh asphalt or on asphalt, they sink out the site or stuff like that. So it was put in place mainly because you've got concrete trucks backing over curb and gutter, curb and gutter is thirty inches wide. If you roll a ready mixed truck over that, then you start tipping, put the outrayer for drywall truck on that, it's going to sink, keep it cracking. So it was a way to kind of police that damage. Going forward, so long story short, three, four, ten, maybe.
So then if it pays for it, then.
So typically, when we have like repairs happen to the street, the street doesn't have its last, its overlay, its final lift put on there yet. So a lot of times we're addressing the repair already within the overlay of the road for due development.
But the concrete curb and gutter though, that's a different story.
It depends on.
We've done patching.
We have done patching before, so per review, there was a patching of the curb and gutter prior to final payment lift.
Lost river, there wasn't as much bad and fallen on spot after the fact, we're working around the remedy of that. Where the curb and gutter has been disturbed, damaged, so.
So if you get rid of the, if you get rid of it though, how?
We're already addressing those repairs within the overlay during the project. So that's what I'm saying, is the administrative side of it. And the liability on our books of a thousand dollars for each property, you're taking on a lot of liability.
So it gets paid for.
From the bond.
From.
From the bond. But it's very minimal.
I completely disagree. I completely disagree with that and I'm going to tell you why. In developments like mine, where we have concrete all the way through the entire development and people are still building out there, you have an unbelievable amount of opportunity for damage on the streets and I've witnessed it in the last several years, I can't tell you how many times. And I have a concrete road, it's not asphalt, so it's not a final lift that's going to go on that road. So any damage that's done to that road, we get to live with. And we don't have a means to come back to the city and say, well, I need a final lift or I want you to take it out of some sort of a bond or I want you to do this or that. I think we need to have some sort of a fee, whether it be in the permitting side of things, when somebody comes in to do a permit. I think there needs to be some way to capture some cost. And it doesn't have to be a lot, okay? Because like they said, it's only thirty percent roughly, you know, out of a hundred percent where this actually happens. But I'm living it and I'm tired of having situations where we have to pay for things after the fact that we're not prepared to pay for and we have to tap our residents for it. So I think we need to have some sort of provision to do that. Now, I'm not against eliminating the street bond, I think that idea sucks. I had to come in, write a check, I still don't think I've gotten my street bond back and I've lived here for how many years now? But I can tell you this, I think that a real simple way to solve this is to eliminate the bond itself, that requirement, eliminate the administrative requirement, eliminate the requirement of getting the engineer involved and just saying, you know, based on the size of a lot or based on this many feet of frontage or based on when you pull a permit, this is what we're going to charge you. And that all goes into a kitty. And we use those funds, they may not be a lot, but that little bit we use for those types of repairs when they come in. When a resident calls and says, I had a guy that put outrayers out and he damaged my curb. You got a couple hundred bucks, you can go out and fix it for him and you don't have to charge a guy anything.
Yep.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah.
And that was Sarah suggesting that is the solution, I know Sarah and I've had quite a bit of discussion on it. We had a lengthy conversation about it before. I think that is a very good idea because it doesn't keep that as a liability on our books where we may have to return the dollars. So if we charge like a street.
So we're just going to do it in a different way.
What we could do, what we could do is like a street repair fee or something like that. And I think that I would work, you know, I'd work with Jim and Lucas and Liz to identify the proper way of doing it. But the street bond is where it's.
You're not having to administer the bond every time for every property.
If Sarah's talking about where you have a fund, we're able to put that into a fund because we know on average about X percent is going to be causing us cost for repairs. That would be more beneficial with less of a risk for the city on a liability side.
So it's something that you keep then? I thought you said you give it back.
A street bond we keep.
A street bond.
Or we keep and then give back once they've proven that the repairs are, you know, the street is kept up. They haven't damaged the street. This other fee concept would be, okay, instead of a thousand dollar street bond, maybe we charge three hundred dollar street repair fee. That just, it's not refundable, we keep to repair the street because we know on average they're going to damage the street that percentage.
And it can be different for residential properties versus commercial versus industrial. I don't care how you do it, well, that'll be another discussion, but I mean, realistically, this doesn't have to be a lot of money. But if you implement something like that, then we have some funds to do some nice things with. We can fix some areas if something gets damaged, you know?
To give you an example, to give you an example, like the elementary school remodel. That's a thousand dollar street bond, the same as a street bond for a house. We have one level of street bond, not multiple. So if you'd like us to visit that deeper, I just didn't want to spend a bunch of staff time into it until bouncing it off my council because that's a deeper conversation and we have had this brought up frequently from the building community, both commercial side and residential.
Can you just explain to me, like, you know, when you talk about the bond and the books and liability, like, what does that mean? Like, what's the difference between, like, why would it matter if you do a bond versus like a kitty pool of funds? Can you just explain that to me? Because I.
Liz, I'm going to turn to you just to help me explain it thereof. My understanding would be that it's a liability because it's dollars that could still be owed to somebody.
So we get the money, it's restricted, you can't touch it. So it basically is just sitting, it's set aside, we can't do anything with it until it's like reviewed and then like what he was talking about, the cost, administrative cost. Like, for example, it could, you know, we have to pay the engineer, which their fees are not cheap. Then we have other staff that has to review. But, you know, and then most of the time for the cost of actually reviewing, assessing the damage and stuff exceeds, that's exceeded a thousand dollars anyway. So we're not really recouping our cost. So, and then if they're doing the patching for a couple hundred dollars, you know, so forth. But if you have to pay the engineer and then our staff to review it, the inspectors and we just take time other day and we won't review it. It's, it's coming up to more than a thousand dollars. But, but in the meantime, I think we have three hundred and sixty thousand dollars sitting in that liability fund that we cannot touch. It's restricted funds.
And if it doesn't get.
It's not doing us any good until, like, after they review it, they're like, setting back, if they review it, there's not any money on, so it's not benefiting the city. But meanwhile, we have this pool of funds, we can't do anything with.
Basically, dollars are tied up, we can't touch them until.
I get it, but then, like, then you're just nickel and diamond again, like.
That's what I'm trying to.
Here's another three hundred dollars we want from you.
People choose to build, they're choosing to take on added cost. You know, building a new house is not cheap.
The concern too is with the street bond is, let's say, somebody has a new home built. The concern too is with the street bond is let's say somebody has a new home built. They're paying that hundred, a thousand dollar street bond in the cost of building a home. They're likely not getting that street bond back. When they, oh, as I can say this, I built the house in Horace and I didn't get a street bond back. Builder assumed as, hey, that's the cost of the permit, they said, we're going to charge you X amount for the permit, high or low, it's gonna be this amount. And I didn't get a check back for a street bond. So very few builders are probably doing that to where they're refunding the street bond if they're doing good work, they're keeping, they're keeping that. So it's not giving the savings to the tenant typically of who's, or tenant, I say, the property owner who's gonna own that home. It's going to the builder. And our, the biggest concern that we've had from the builder perspective is that the builders, they're, they're complaining as their subs, but we're saying, we'll get your subs in line. They're going, why can't you go after the sub and have the sub pay for that? Well, if we have this lower fee, but it's just a set fee like what Sarah suggested, it makes it a little more palatable. Because it's not the honing subs and it's less administrative hassle or challenge.
Well, it's less of your guys' time, that's the key here.
More time to plan traffic control.
We're trying, I know Sarah.
But it's not.
We'll, we'll load a barricade up tonight and.
But going back to the administrative side and the um time for the engineers and stuff, that all costs the city money. So, but in reality, like to see three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we're loading into the liability. Um it's caught, you know, and it's probably costing you closer to four hundred thousand dollars a year. Net, I guess, so, but we, anyway, it's tying up fun, funds that we could be using otherwise. So, but if we did like a one-time like street fee, just like we, we would be better off instead of holding on to that money and then having the engineers review everything and inspectors, we're, we're not, you know?
And what's wrong with asking the contractors to fix the issues that they?
It gets to be a lot of this.
Whose trailer was it?
Then hold them accountable.
It still gets to be.
If you're there and you witnessed it, perfect.
Or it'd be, well, it was so and so's trailer across the street, they're building that house across the street, it wasn't the house being built. They're trying to keep the bond from, even though it's right in front of the street, right in front of their house, or the house that they're working on. It gets to be a lot of the finger pointing back and forth and that's also what helps to eliminate.
It's a he said, he said thing.
Yes, we've had times where we've caught individuals. I, I could point specifically to one spot where I witnessed a pumper truck right there, we kept the street bond from that property. And I could tell you that exactly where that pothole is, because it kept growing. And what happened is the pumper truck put their pad down, right in the middle of the road on a hot summer day. And it just slowly kept sinking throughout the summer after they already did their work, they only did that for, you know, a day. But ramifications are there for a while and I think we spent a lot more in that one, you're, you know what I'm talking about? That one's that, I know we spent more than a thousand dollars in repairing just that pothole. So, but that's a more extreme situation than what we typically run across.
And you were, you caught it, I mean, most of the time we don't see it.
It was nor, it's normally a cracked curb, that's typically what we're dealing with, cracked curbs. So, yeah. Uh but anyways, we could dig deeper, or we could dig deeper into it and have a alternate scenario like Sarah mentioned, the flat, like a flat fee.
You don't have to do a flat fee, you can propose something else, I'm just saying, there's better ways of doing it, you know?
Like I said, I just didn't wanna be chasing down that one until bouncing off the council, let you know some of the challenges we're having with it. Um the other item is block length, this has been frequently brought up. Almost every development that we have is a conversation. A few years ago, the city reduced the block length from nine hundred feet to seven hundred feet.
Why?
The goal of that, intentions of that was to help limit the cookie cutter home feel. Or like a row house concept, has that been successful in mitigating that? No, at least in my perspective, I have not seen that. Uh we've also tried encouraging variable lot sizes. And that really hasn't combated that concept either. Now, we are working with developers, encouraging them and you'll probably see some plats in the near future where we've stressed the importance of having variety of homes, not the same, right, back to back to back to back to back all the way down the block. We've indicated that at the staff level, that that has been a concern from the city council. And asking for their cooperation to work with the city to have variable, you know, variable homes and uh not have the exact same cookie cutter throughout the house or throughout the block. But the block length was reduced and the goal was to help reduce the cookie cutter homes. What it actually has done is it made it to where we have a little more infrastructure. So you have to account for more road because you're breaking up the block length. You also have to account for um the late, that was actually the biggest ramification that we've seen. And like I said, we have, we did not accomplish what we were hoping to accomplish by reducing that block length. So I, I just wanna bring it up as, you know, for discussion, that's a challenge that we're running across.
What about snow removal?
Snow removal is additional road that we have to follow snow on, that's our challenge too. Because shorter block length does equal more road.
Russ, go ahead, you had a question.
We did not reduce block length to end cookie cutter houses. The purpose of reducing the block length was to try to reduce the sight lines of.
To break it up.
The, you're looking at the same thing. You can have variable house, house size, but uh typically in a neighborhood, all your drapery's front the same way. We're just trying to break up the sight line a little bit, that was the, that was the whole point. And there, and there are, there are written in the ordinance is there are places where if you're along a river, if you're along the railroad, those things uh they don't have to follow that, that limitation.
Okay.
Yeah, so there is some.
We do have some flexibility where there's natural barriers or.
Yeah.
Bigger barriers that we can't work around.
So then the downside of that is the plowing, what else was it?
Well, the main, main, mainly the biggest cost would be, you're calling for more street.
Yeah.
Especially the door.
That's the, that's the response I've been hearing from the developers and that's why I wanted to bring it up for council. I told most, you know, when this come up in conversation, that we'd bring it up for a conversation with the city council and if they would like us to dig deeper into it, we will.
So I kinda remember talking about that with Matt and it was, I think his vision was more of like, you know, old Fargo, like eighth street type, so that you don't have this like one arterial or not necessarily arterial, but one collector street through these developments. It's more like the traffic disperses equally through the development.
Well, the other, the kid doesn't have to go a quarter mile
Yeah.
To get to the end of the street.
Yeah, which is.
And then, and then, and then drive, you know, then ride uh another five hundred feet to get to his house.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing enough reasoning to change this for any reason. I mean, seven hundred feet, nine hundred feet, whether it's cookie cutter or line of sight or anything, I mean.
I don't think developers really want to do that, like a street style, they want the collector street. Is, it seems like what everybody designs it as. I mean, especially bigger developments like Southdale and stuff, I don't know. They just don't, it doesn't work for them because that's not how they design. But it, I mean, maybe it, I think as far as like kids getting places on their bike, yeah, it's nice. I tried to cut through my neighbor's yard as a kid and got yelled at.
I, I do actually.
I love it when the kids cut through my yard.
That, that's a really good point, is having the kids, you know.
And one, one idea that has been brought by some developers and they'll probably see at the planning commission level, we have had it brought forward to council before in planning commission was using bike paths to break up a block link. So they dedicate right away for a bike path instead of putting a street in. So you still have connectivity like what you're talking about, but you're not having it for a total road.
I need to see a heck of a lot more improvement in multi-use paths and bike paths before I'm gonna consider that.
Yeah.
And, and I haven't seen it and I think that that's something that we need all a lot more of in this town, is the multi-use paths, the bike paths. The, a way to get our snowmobilers and our four-wheeling kids out of town safely, you know, instead of on the main roads. That was something that was brought up with Wall Avenue, is having these kids on bikes on the road, I mean, my god, we need to do something.
I'll let the kids cut through my yard all day long because there's no sidewalks in my area at all.
We should have some like kids welcome signs, yard signs.
I just say, hey guys.
Seriously, just, you know?
All right, so what do we want to say? Why don't you leave the block lengths alone then is what you're saying?
Would you like it to be left alone? We also are going through a land use ordinance overhaul, so we could have our consultant, just rely on our consultants to do that. We could bring this to discussion just to, to planning commission, have that general discussion with planning commission to see what their ideas are. That's what I'm looking for you, because as you can tell, block length, that could be a lengthy, that could be a, that could be an involved discussion.
I think it could and I think it could go.
I wanna make sure we're going off of where council, you give us some direction where you'd like us to go on.
We're not that far off from the ordinance. So I think let's just deal with it with the ordinance unless you have a situation at hand that like really proves to us that it's a, you know, a pressing issue.
Massive hindrance, it's just, it's two hundred feet.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else you need on that one, Brett?
Nope, I don't need anything, I got one.
All right. Christmas lights, huh?
This is more festive.
All right.
Uh in regards to Christmas lights, uh with the development of Southdale Farms, we're adding more Christmas, or more streetlights along corridor seventeen, going north, that development is coming for more streetlights to make it safer. Um what we have is, what we're proposing is to go procure more streetlights. We would not have them in time for this season due to how long it takes to get these. Um previous years, it actually hasn't been too, too bad, turnaround time has been about a month or two on most of these. Uh we could get a preorder for next year, it'll be cheaper to do that versus to order it, say in July of next year.
I thought the Lions helped with the Christmas lights.
We have cost shared with Lions Club, we have not approached Lions Club about cost share for these yet. We can if the council would like us to, or we could just do it ourselves. Uh but the last two of our rounds, we have cost shared lights and banners with the Lions Club. They participate with the fifty fifty cost share, we appreciate them working with us, that's been a greatly relationship. Like I said, we just have not gone to the Lions, we typically go into the council first. And then if council would like us to throw it up for consideration of Lions, we can.
I would like to, I think so.
Yes, and yes.
So what this is, the proposal is to purchase twenty of each of the lights that we have, so the two different types. That would account for enough for all the new streetlights. Plus giving a few extras in case they get damaged or, you know, we have to pull one down for repairs, things like that.
Are you allocating enough for the lights that are gonna go to the west on the main corridor seventy six too?
My understanding is this would account for all the streetlights, so.
Why you have them for west?
I think we do have for west.
Yeah, they go west a little bit.
I think we do have quite a few for the west and seventy six.
And then we got all new developments like Cub Creek and whatnot there?
That, that was why we bought, why we bought ones the last four rounds, no, not for Cub Creek.
No, you didn't, because that's a county project.
Okay, yeah.
We have to add those.
But we accounted for thirteen for each, what I'm asking for is twenty for each. That way it gives us seven extras in case we had damages, we'll probably account for quite a few of.
Would you double check your account and just make sure, if we're gonna do an order, let's make sure that we have that covered? Because those are a lot of new people in that development that are not from here. I actually spent some time talking to several residents out there this last weekend and a lot of them aren't from here. They're not from Fargo, they're not from North Dakota. And I think it would be so cool to do something for them because it's really dark over there. And I, I think including them would be awesome.
We, what we could do is verify the number, if you would like us to still proceed with the preorder, we can. And we could just up those numbers. Um I believe if you said not to, I say, in the numbers I have, our staff calculated twenty for each of the lights. It would come out to eighteen thousand eight sixty. If you say not to exceed either twenty-five or thirty thousand, I'm pretty confident we're not gonna exceed that.
Okay. I'd like to.
I, and I could come back with a more specific number, if you want me to come back with a more specific number, I can.
No, just, you know, make it work for whatever you need. And honestly, Christmas lights in small towns are really cool and that's one of the things that I love about Horace. You drive just south of West Fargo and you get these cool banners and these cool lights and it's, it's like a whole different winter wonderland. It's a whole different world here and.
Well, can we get it on the agenda though to talk to the Lions, to see if they're willing to?
I could ask them.
I could do.
Yeah.
All I might need is a number, get it more specific so I can, we can do the conversation.
It would just be kinda cool that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll drill down this number more to account for what you're talking about, Sarah. Would you guys like us to come back to council or would you like to just authorize an up to amount? And then we'll propose to account Lions Club to, either one, I'm comfortable either way.
I have no issue doing an up to or not to exceed amount. These meetings are long enough without arguing over Christmas lights.
Go back again.
I don't know how much work that is for them to put those up, but it might be nice to know like how far we wanna take this, you know? If we're going off on the side streets and then where do we stop and?
We typically focus on seventy-six avenue.
The main vein?
And.
Main arterials.
The main roads, I mean, if you're wanting it to be along like Lakeview and seven, and eighty-second, sixty-third. I mean, there's, that would be more of us, but we've just been chipping that, adding a little bit more.
In my development.
Well, and, and I think down the road, you know, Wall is gonna be a main, it might be really nice to do something there, I mean.
But that'll come.
That would be beautiful.
But I think now, we, we do an order, get this one in the pipe and then.
Our main focus has been seventy-six and seventeen. And maybe in the future you have it to where it's a totally different light going down a different road or something too.
But I mean, we're gonna have some big arterials and eventually, you know, as those build out and we're talking years, we're not talking, you know, we're talking years down the road, but just something to plan for. And if you do little stints of twenty here, twenty there, it makes it a little more manageable and feasible for the city instead of one massive.
We're gonna have to start talking about getting our own lift.
Actually, we were talking about that at Public Works, we do have a grant from Workhorse Safety Initiative, I believe it's a group, uh or WSI. And I believe it's ten thousand dollars or seventy-five hundred that we could put towards a lift, that's what we're looking at.
Good.
Um.
Do you wanna use that for a lift when you got Sunbelt right off of fifty-second, you can rent?
We rent those lifts quite a bit.
Do ya?
Yeah. It would pay for, it would pay for itself, yeah, between eight and ten, we're anticipating with these additional lights.
More than that, buy in one.
Well, we had some used ones, we said about twenty-seven to thirty.
For an old train? Lift?
Well, that's what Adam said.
Our staff has been looking at options, we have not selected anything or even said yes, move forward with proposing something to council. We have proposed something to council after we've had other options.
Okay.
So I think it's pretty mature to say it's going to be X number of dollar amount, but like I said, we do have a grant to help pay for the cost of it, so.
All right, so so the Christmas lights, let's say we do what, twenty-five grand, no, not to exceed?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, so let me make the motion.
I'll make that motion, not to exceed twenty-five thousand to procure Christmas lights for future.
And this would be in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah. Okay, Sarah made the motion, you had a second?
A second.
Okay, just a second. Okay, on my favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and I will bring it to the Lions.
I like how much light they give off too, it's a safety.
Once you give me the numbers, Brett.
That helps.
We'll refine them all with what Jim and we'll double check.
Perfect, all right, Jim, go through the.
We'll run through the project summaries, uh we'll be wrapping things up here. I think relatively soon it'll probably be one more of these this year and then I think things will be slowed down for the winter. So first project we got is the uh Horace proper water replacement. Um this one, we're only about twenty-eight percent complete, but uh all the replacements, they're gonna get done in Horace proper is done for the year. Um streets are still kind of an issue as to if they're gonna get paved or not as of last. As of last week, it didn't look like they were, but with the borders, with border states paving, there might be a chance that they get that done. They spent quite a bit of time last week prepping the subgrade, getting it, getting it compacted. More than ever did they put in the week before. So we have a construction week tomorrow afternoon, so I'll find out more, more on that. But they are working down towards the Vistos area and working on looping, uh, Vistos into the city system. Right now that's on Casper Road. You're bulk user to them. So this would bring them on the city system and then you don't become, you're no longer a bulk user to Casper Road on that, so. Uh, work completed since the last summary was water replacement areas requiring temporary water. Won't pay any more temporary water temperatures in the twenties at night. Things are gonna freeze and that's just the way it works, so. Uh, work anticipated for this month is water main looping around Visto, street subgrade prep, work restoration cleanup and curb stock replacements on the third and fourth streets. So you're gonna start seeing some working area, you know, we have about replacing curb stuffs in there, so. Uh, connection to Casper Road, this will be the final summary for twenty twenty-one. Uh, project is fifty-three percent complete. Uh, work completed since last summary was transmission line installation is complete. Uh, work anticipated this month will be the water tower mixer. Uh, the water tower mixer is an important thing to get in before the winter because the tower has frozen in the past. So by getting that mixer in there, getting that water circulating, keeping it from freezing in the winter months, so. Uh, work anticipated in twenty twenty-two is directional drilling, connection to the valve and work along sixty, sixty-third. So, uh, that one went, went pretty well.
When do they plan to get the mixer in?
This is the next one. This is what we, is the latest schedule we have. Lakeview addition, Lakeview addition is sixty-three percent complete with forty-six percent of the time used, so they're ahead of schedule when it comes to that. We should enable that project is July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, so, uh, they are making good progress on that. Uh, work completed since the last summary was sixty-five percent of the roadway excavation and subgrade prep is done. Sixty-five percent of the fabric are anti-overdravel base and sixty-five percent of the streets have been, have been paved. So basically that's the residential area. The commercial area, um, Lakeview in front don't, aren't required to get paved this year. Uh, work anticipated for the remainder of this month is water main tie-in on Wall Avenue, working on the Bannely Brook. Excavation's been done and the channel liner has been placed, but they need to put the riprap in along the sides. Lighting, electrical flatwork, roadway excavation and, um, some other miscellaneous stuff. So that one's moving along quite a bit. Terragarden's third addition, this one we talked about earlier, this is one that's fifty-one percent complete by dollars and seventy-four percent complete by time. So they're a little bit under on that. The paving accounts for quite a bit of that, so if they would get the pavement done, it would jump up on the percent complete based on dollars, so. Uh, work completed since last summary is subgrade prep and anger gets. Work anticipated for this month is curving gutter, pavement, sidewalk, shared use, best signage seating height, that's more than likely not gonna happen this year, the seating height will change. Uh, Southdale Farms third addition, uh, this is a good one. They're about eighty-five percent complete with eighty-six percent of the time used, so. They are definitely making a effort to get it done as soon as possible. And I actually think that they're going to be done, they want, requesting a final walkthrough middle of this week, so.
They weren't, uh, painting this morning, but they unloaded their painter this afternoon. Are they gonna get everything painted, striped?
They had to do just the arrows. That was the last thing. They finished up, they had the long lines done. In the last week and then, uh, once it gets warm enough, they were putting in the arrows today.
Okay, so there's a, there's a temperature constraint on that. That's what I wanted to know because I saw him offloading after lunch. I'm like, where the hell was he this morning?
There's a temperature requirement down there, so, um, like I said, that all the work on corridor seventeen is done. They're working on backfilling and grading those, uh, along corridor seventeen. Seventy-five percent of the flatwork's done, eighty percent of the streetlights. Pond is done, flex map, uh, road control around it's been done. Finish up segregating, streetlight completion, flatwork completion and, uh, road striving. We completed this week, but for this month, hundred percent is all the underground work, so. Um, their, their schedule has them being done, um, Friday. They have more work after Friday.
I'm, I'm worried about signs getting in before the ground freezes. Can you mention that in your next discussion with them?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Even if they just put the base, because this is the standard breakaway signs, right? Just get the bases in so they can just slip them in later while we have fifty degrees here.
So next meeting I'll get you briefed on where we're at for design come the twenty twenty-one, uh, fall season, so that's what I've got for you tonight.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Jim?
No, I'm, I'm sorry to micromanage Jim. It's just concerns that I have as I'm going down the road.
Brent, update.
Hey, I have updated building permit numbers for you. I figured I haven't done that for a little while. Right now, we are at a total of four hundred and fifty permits total. That's new and remodels. Last year, to give you a comparison, last year we were at a hundred and seventy-eight permits total, new and remodels. Residential, just residential, flat-out, single-family home. It's two hundred and seventy-seven new homes. Uh, but then when you factor in residential as a whole, so twin home, town home, any of those concepts. And counting total units, uh, well, total permits we're at two hundred and ninety-five. And we'd be just over three hundred permits when you count it as units. So like a town home that could have, the building be one permit, could be four units or three units or something like that. We also have twelve commercial and last year we had twelve commercial. Uh, but the valuation is nearly double for the commercial. Total valuation last year, keep in mind, uh, last year the valuation had the high school permit in there of forty-seven million. So that our total valuation was seventy-five, just under seventy-six million for total valuation of properties. This year, total valuation does not have the big schools accounted for. It does have this elementary school remodel at six point four million. But total valuation comes in at just over a hundred thou- a hundred million. So we have grown quite a bit in valuation into our community this year.
Wait a minute, did I hear you right?
Over a hundred million dollars has been put into our community over this year.
For twelve commercial permits versus last year with the schools and one permit?
All permits, all permits.
All permits?
All permits.
Thank you.
Valuation comparison, last year, this year for all permits.
What was just the commercial?
Commercial last year was just a hair under four million. This year is just over seven million. So we have same number of permits, but year-to-date, but more value attached to them.
When you talk about these permits, are they, does that mean like it could be like Thompson Homes for example? Getting these permits going or are these like people that are actual homeowners?
Well, these would be the builder, taking out the permit to build the homes, but.
Do you know like how many homeowners are in gravy?
Typically, we don't have.
Well, like that's not just a, like a developer or.
I, I don't have that data, but I could, indicated that builders a couple of months ago. We're starting to schedule homes for next year because they didn't have the ability to tackle the homes this year.
Bottom line is most of the builders don't have enough inventory right now.
Most of them are for actual people.
Yeah, I don't think.
You have.
Probably spec homes are done in town anymore. I mean, it seems like every one of them is.
Well, many of the times if a spec home is being built, it's gobbled up before.
Right.
It's done. That's what happens with them.
Very few of that anymore.
But I do not have the data. I could ask, but I don't know if I'd be able to get that information timely for you, but I could still ask.
Yeah, can you?
We could try to get an idea.
I just, I'm curious to know like how many actual like new homeowners are coming into the area. Versus, I mean, I know we have all these developments and, you know, whatnot, but it'd be, I'm curious to know like where we're actually.
Yeah, you don't see them sitting empty.
And, and I do know that some of these are, some are rentals too.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just wanna know like. Rented or, or home-owned, either way.
Okay, anything else, Brent?
Uh, the other one I have is, uh, we are striving to get our new website up. We're hop- hoping to have it up middle of this week, towards the end of this week. So there may be parts that are still under construction of development. You're getting the content loaded up. Uh, but we are striving to be able to get the new website and try to start transitioning to our new website this week. Uh, Bobby and Sally. So all sta- all staff has had some high level overview of the website. But the ones, we have two staff members that would be really into being able to do that. That's who don't wanna have everybody doing edits to the website. We just wanna keep it to just a couple. If you'd like a train on the website, I'd be more than happy to coordinate for you, Jeff.
I have all of November off. As long as you don't pick on the weekends, I'll come in someday and we'll do it.
There you go. That's all I have.
Alright, um, portfolio reports, um, we were out in Bismarck, it was last Tuesday? No, Tuesday before, wasn't it? I met with the senate, um, subcommittee on appropriations, trying to see if we'd get some money for this, uh, flush to Fargo project. It's looking less promising from what we understand. They're changing how they're gonna distribute that money. Not real tickled about that, but okay. We'll keep working with our guys out there, see if we can get in on this, but I'm not holding a lot of hope right now. A little grumpy about that.
Did the redistricting have any impact on that?
No, this is a whole separate ballgame, unfortunately.
Is it a quick summary of why or?
No, there's not really, they, they are going in a special session though, if you guys hadn't heard about that. They were supposed to get this done in a couple of days. That did not happen. Uh, I didn't think it would because they started arguing where that money was gonna be spent almost right away, so. This is gonna be an ongoing gig probably for another ten, who knows how long days, but now everything's in play. Not just the Biden bucks, but it'll be, they're gonna talk about redistricting. There's gonna be about five or six bills that are gonna be presented. There's some other conversations about other bills being presented, so this could go on for a while. We don't know.
You can see the whole playbook of a basically a mini legislative session. Coming to play.
So we don't know. We're just gonna have to monitor it and see where this goes with the money, because I really would like that project paid for. I know you got this one the other way, but the Halloween bit we had on Saturday went really well. I got a lot of positive feedback on it. So I just wanted to pass that along. I think kids all had a blast. One thing I will, another thing I'm gonna mention about, if there are anybody that you know that is doing raffles in the city of Horace. They do need to get a permit. Can't have anybody doing those without a permit because that would get down to illegal raffles going on in town. We don't want that.
Like organizations?
Organizations. Anybody's doing raffles needs to get a permit through the city for sure. Um, so we make sure that that gets done. I don't want anybody getting caught doing it otherwise because it doesn't look good. Then we're gonna put that in the, in the Horace happening so we can get that out to people, so they're aware of that. We should probably put something up on our website as well, so people are aware. The other thing too is just, uh, we'll just reiterate, we are planning to get together on Wednesday afternoon and talk about Wall Avenue. And we'll start coming up with that and we'll get back to you guys on, where we land on that, so. That's what I got. Sarah?
Think you covered most of it. Uh, I will reiterate, the Halloween party was a blast. I got my butt kicked in the glow run. I mean, literally kicked a mile. Ooh, I think it was more than a mile. But the kids had a ball. Um, the seniors said it was the best turnout that they have ever had at the senior center.
They sold out all their treats.
They literally sold out all their food. It was a blast. And, uh, I know my daughter attended and was so exhausted from storing that night, so congratulations to you. And thank you to all of the volunteers and, uh, people that helped to put that on. We definitely need a bigger venue next year. It was awesome. We have great feedback and great ideas for next year. How fun that we can do this in our community. This is everything I dreamed a small community to be, even though we're growing. It's amazing.
I was gonna mention too, there was that, the gal who had the little girl that won one of the.
Came all the way from Menomonee.
Phenomenon, yeah, because they saw it online and thought, well, this is gonna be a small town fun thing to do, and she had a blast.
We don't know where we're at, but we're here.
I told them how to get out of town, little kid. Still, that was cool that they were able to come and have a good time like that, so that was fun. Anyway, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're fine, you're fine. I, I think you've captured a lot of some of the other things. I know I've had interactions with several folks, um, since the last special session. With questions on our process for what's going on with special assessments. And I was happy to get a brief update on that and an opportunity to look through the first draft, so. I'm gonna spend a little more time with that here this week and provide some feedback. And then, um, told that it's gonna be going around, making its rounds through everybody else. Brenton, is there anything else you wanna add on that before I?
Basically, our goal is just to present an overview to council and public. Have it available out there for people to be able to see, but then come back a later, you know, another, you know, another meeting later. Asking council to take action because that is such an important document. We don't, we don't wanna have council, you know, knee-jerk on this. We wanna make sure that you guys are all comfortable with that policy. Is it going to be perfect on everything? No, but we've put a lot of effort into that.
I, I understand.
The process will be started.
Yeah, I understand it's quite a bit of effort that's gone into that. A lot of meetings, a lot of time. Far above and beyond anything that was expected, so, um, spending a little time with that to make sure that I'm comfortable. But I really appreciated that opportunity. I know that it's not easy. Uh, those are difficult topics, but good discussions with people. So that's all I have for now.
Yeah, and piggybacking off of that, you know, policy, you know, I had a chance today to kinda go through it. I didn't get to read the whole thing, but I did get, you know, a pretty good rundown with Dylan, um, at Stan Tech. And, um, so I'm looking forward to going through that policy and just really understanding and making sure that. Before everything's approved, that we're all comfortable with what's going on going forward. Because I cried at the special assessment, special meeting, so.
That was a tough one.
That was, it was very tough for me, um, you know, spent, you know, having to deal with other people's monies. It, it's not easy.
It's personal.
It is, and I just wanna do right to the residents, so. Um, and then, yes, Halloween event was really, really fun. I just enjoyed the old, it was like an old-school atmosphere, like these kids out on the dance floor. It was like the cutest thing and they had like the smoke machine going and they were just loving it. Um, they loved that the mayor was there to, um, as well. You know, all the kids are like, come here. Um, so that was really fun. But yeah, I do wanna thank the seniors, um, for their hard work as well. And, um, Sally and the rest of the volunteers that helped out within the dance pros and. It's always fun when you have a successful fun event, so.
Chelsea, what do you got?
Um, I was at the Halloween event. I helped set up. I recruited my mom and sister. Because our volunteer levels are very low. I'm thinking we need to talk to the high school kids, the, um, booster club, maybe, or some of those guys.
There's a bunch of them.
Yeah, we need to get the high school kids in there. Definitely learned some things for next year and I keep saying, you know, like, the issue we have with our events is we, we lack consistency. We have had some turnover in that position. Hopefully Sally enjoys it and will stay. And we can, you know, take our lessons and make it, you know, make it excellent. I think spacing out the dancers would disperse like some of the congestion a little bit, so I think the senior center could still work with some good planning. Um, but yeah, it was, Sally did a really good job with the little games and everything and it was super cute. Um, and then also that grate outside of the senior center looks really nice. Good job, Jim. Uh, thank you. Thanks for mentioning that to them since they were working out there. The, we've been having discussions on the remodel, so we're looking at like a January one start date for that. So we wanna make sure we get all the materials ordered. So it goes quick. And then I was going to the food commission for probably. And then I was going to the food commission for probably a couple of years I went there. Um, it went, uh, virtual a little while into COVID and I just haven't gone. A pretty fun commission. They do a lot of like, um, a lot of different things besides food and a lot of really good, thought-provoking topics for the community. They have, um, like Snapchat or Snapshots that they put online that you can, that kinda give you a rundown of what they would, um, like ordinance for like beekeeping and like all kinds of different things like that. They have, um.
Didn't we have a question?
Snapshots.
Yeah, we're still.
So, and they, they're a really good resource.
Updates to address that.
In process.
Yeah, so if anybody is interested in doing something like that or just even reaching out to Adam at MetroCog, I think he's, still leads that commission and he can have the resources available. And it's gr, it's a great tool for staff, I think, when they're working on stuff. I had given them a couple Snap. Snapshots that I, they had given me, so, um, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Jeff, what do you got?
Um, I'll just echo their comments. Uh, I was also at the Halloween party, it was a great time. Um, and I look forward to see what, uh, what we have for next year with that. Um, I decided I'm meeting the mayor on Wednesday, where the mayor and Breton and Jim, and Lucas. Lucas, he gonna be in person? To discuss Wall Avenue and, uh, other than that, uh, in the interest of time, I will keep it short and sweet and that's it.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, thanks for coming and helping us.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Jeff makes a motion, give it a second.
Second.
Chelsea with a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're done.
So is there still a bunch of pumpkins over there? Oh, no, she lived there, she lives right.